Good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. Meeting's called to order, public comment. Is there any public comment not related to agenda items tonight? Seeing none, our first order of business is waiver requests for 119 Mass Ave.
So, the applicant is not here today because they come from a long ways away, so I told them that I would represent this simple waiver request. In our sign bylaw, any sign greater than 36 square feet requires a site plan approval. At 119 Mass Ave, which is the Walker Orthodontics Building, they would like to place a sign on the building that is greater than 36 square feet. It doesn't impact the site. It is permissible under the sign bylaw, but based on the language in the bylaw, they are requesting a waiver from site plan approval to place the sign as shown in the material in your packet.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion because of a professional relationship with Dr. Walker.
They are?
I didn't hear her over the microphone. Okay, and it looks like it's on the awning?
It is.
It is. All right. Does everybody think about that?
So, they're saying that because the awning is being used as a sign, that technically it's larger than the allowable sign?
Larger than the size of the sign that is permitted without site plan approval per Section 6.5.
Right.
So essentially, if you measured the lettering, it would be less than the 36 square feet, but because the lettering is on...
I mean, if you went letter by letter, but I think the totality of the sign is greater than 36 square feet, therefore requires site plan approval. The bylaw doesn't specify whether it is freestanding or other, it just says any sign over 36 square feet. And so the building inspector suggested that they seek site plan approval. In speaking with them, I felt that this was the appropriate course, since it doesn't impact the site in any realistic way, other than visually. And I don't believe is out of character for anything along that area.
Yeah, I personally think the awning looks fine. If it wasn't for the actual 119, which is the address on the awning, it would probably be smaller than the required size, given that the letter sign part of it is only 22 inches. I think that implies, if I have this correct, it's a 22-inch fascia and then a slanted awning sloping up, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with this. You're good with it? I would move that we would accept the waiver to allow the sign as documented without a site plan approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent. Excellent. So, another waiver request for 554 Lancaster Ave, for barn construction.
Get to the center stage.
So, my name is Stephen Violette. Represent Dick's Market Gardens here in town. We're a small fruit and vegetable farm, and we farm on a couple of different locations here in Lunenburg. One is the site we're referring to. It's an APR site, and we're direct marketers that specialize, again, in fresh fruits and vegetables. We're seeking a waiver on a site plan so we can put a barn on the location. We're already doing washing and prepping the vegetables for storage and also handling light packaging onsite already, and that's the proposal for this building here that we're planning on building.
Excellent.
My name is John Mara. I know a number of you. I work with Stephen and helped him put the grant together. So, this is a state, partially state-funded building, and then Stephen's paying the bulk of it. But it'd be a 40-by-80-foot building, lots of road, and it's going to be used for, as Stephen said, rinsing and cooling and bringing vegetables that are currently being treated in the open back into a building to make it safer for everyone. So you have in your packet the proposed location of the building, draft of plans from Mr. Pat Slattery, who's an architect here in town. Behind that, there's a couple of rough drawings that we've been fooling with after marking on Pat's, and there's a contour sheet in there showing that the cut into the hill will be five-and-a-half feet to the left, six feet to the right side of the building, and any soil that would be moved for a cut would then be used for filling the back of the building, because the rear wall would be 12 feet high. So we're going to grade back in again.
Okay. Is it going to have water?
We do have town water already to the site we're at right now. Basically, we have like an open air station where we wash vegetables. Predominantly, we sell at our farm stand, but we do several markets in the Boston area, and oftentimes we'll pick up directly to try to keep the freshness to the vegetables as we're going into the Boston area, so a lot of the vegetables are fresh picked that day. We use the water also to hydrocool. The water we'd be using would be town water, which is, probably the other parts of this is, we're trying to get into more regimented order, because there's new regulations coming up with food safety. So John alluded to earlier that we were able to receive a grant for this food safety building. There are some other nuances to the grant. We have to have the building completed for the most part by the end of June. So we really, we're going to be kind of making a move on it early this spring, then lining up, you know, the contractors to do it and get an understanding of what we're going to do. So, we're here today to see if we can seek that waiver for site approval. We have done work in the past in the front, and we have had a site plan there, but it doesn't encompass where this building's going to be.
So the previous work you referred to is all that drainage?
Yes.
Apparates?
So that work, maybe even to fill you in, because it was probably a bigger project, a lot of people saw that going on. Couple of years back when we had the drier season, it was basically a drought. We do have a pond that we service for drip irrigation and also watering in our crops. With such a dry season, we dropped the pond down significantly. So we ended up digging or trudging the pond deeper. It was mainly sand material, and since it's APR site, we can't take sand material off. We've always had issues in the front with water collecting up in the front, in some cases actually going into the roadway into Lancaster Ave. So we had to, well, we ended up doing, so we got approval from APR, also local conservation, and leveled the fields, so it was more leveled to farm, also having the ability to look down the road to some of the problems that are going to face farms. Some of them are, you know, containment. So we designed the original basin to the corner with the help of conservation, Lunenburg Conservation, they advised us to make it a little bigger likewise, which helps to drain the front field, but also contains water, so it doesn't rush off rapidly. That's one of the biggest concerns of farms, containment. So that was what that work was in the front.
Very good. Thank you.
And just to let you know, the site plan goes up to the front of the building. If the site plan went 40 feet more, we wouldn't need to be seeking the waiver, but the site plan goes literally to where the front of the building would be.
I'm not very clear on that.
Yeah, I don't understand that.
I think what he's saying is when they have the survey and the site plan drawn, it doesn't include the portion of the hill. And it would still require the site plan approval, because it's for the construction of a non-commercial building. But I think that the important thing that I heard in the conversations I had with Mr. Mara and Mr. Violette were, this is an existing operation that they're currently doing onsite, and the building will be a safer, more appropriate place to do it. It's not increasing the use of the site, it's not increasing the traffic on the site, it's not increasing the number of workers onsite. It's taking an activity that they do outdoor in, honestly, it sounded to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, in almost all weather, that they're doing this and putting it into a place that is more appropriate for the workers and for the washing and cleaning of vegetables. And it's not a, it's not an expansion of the use of the property, it's formalizing a sort of ad hoc operation.
Yeah, that's correct. We started washing the vegetables probably back even 12 years ago when we first brought in the water, the town water for our service. So that's when we, because it's important too to have a product that's clean, you know, also cooled, and this will also give us the ability to do what we feel we're doing good right now, but that much better, which is important and also in a safe manner. So that's what we're doing, and this is the reason for this proposal.
You mentioned it's not commercial, but APR is for commercial agriculture, is it not?
I'm sorry, I meant to say non-residential.
Yes, yes, yes.
I misspoke.
That's okay. I'll open it up. Anybody? Questions, comments?
I just will comment that I did have an opportunity to talk with Adam about this earlier, and as he just stated, it's my understanding that the reason this would trigger a site plan review is because it's a non-residential use. But as was stated, it's an existing use, and it's my understanding that the building will meet all of the required property line offsets. The height is not, will not exceed the requirements. It's an existing operation. It is an agriculture operation, and personally, I don't have a problem granting a waiver.
So I just, there's two diagrams of the front elevation. One shows a really bland front with two doors, the other one shows garage doors, multiple entries, and several windows.
The first one that you saw with the very bland entrance was just a very, very rough drawing.
No.
That was just a preliminary drawing from Pat Slattery that really, it was designed in a, Steven, I was speaking for you, so you wouldn't interrupt me. Was really just to kind of get a sense of what would be needed for the building as far as structure is concerned?
Yep.
And not any conversation about what a door would be or where an access point would be.
Okay.
So that's the reason why the flat...
This is the more accurate representation?
That would be the more accurate representation.
Okay, and then you submitted pictures of Rota Spring Farms, which is actually a really nice-looking barn. And if we had a barn like that on that location, I think it would be actually an asset, because it's a scenic road. And so whatever we can do to, I don't want to say enhance, but, you know, have a nice-looking barn building there, I think would be beneficial to the town, given that that property in particular is always called out as one of the most scenic sites as you're traveling down Lancaster Ave. It's a really nice location, and you will see this barn from the road. So this, there's nothing to do with whether or not I would approve of your exception, but it would be really nice to see the dormers on it, similar to the design that they did at Rota Springs. I think it would make a really nice, appealing view of that property for the townspeople.
What you would see from the street would be the front elevations. You would see the two stories.
Yeah, you'd see the front elevation, right?
Yep, that rear elevation is going to be the backside of the property. So that would be the one story?
This part.
If you were looking at that Rota Spring picture, that would be the one story, it would be the backside, you wouldn't see that.
That's unfortunate. And there's, we wouldn't have the opportunity to put anything on the back elevation?
Well, and I think in terms of keeping it agriculture, a farmer would never put dormers on a barn unless he had a reason to do so.
Good point.
One thing to point out too, I kind of really do appreciate New England barns, and even one of the barns that we did restore down there, or if people can refer to, is a Gambrel-style barn that has the green metal roof.
Mm-hmm.
So that's one of our barns that's already onsite. So we are going to try to keep that New England-style setting there, and this barn is going to be, hopefully, you know, not a twin, but a reflection of that barn that's already existing.
All right, great.
I think Kid's Barn's the only barn in town that has window candles at Christmas. So I'm fairly confident they'll do a good job with it.
We can thank Doug Duval for that.
There you go.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the waiver for Dick's Market Garden.
Second. Excellent. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks.
I thank you.
Congratulations on the grant.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing for 190 Electric Ave, Borrego Solar Systems.
Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on January 14th, 2019, 6:35 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass., 01462. To hear and discuss applications for a special permit and for site plan approval under Chapter 250, Section 4.13, formerly 4.15, and 8.4 of the Code of Lunenburg, respectfully, for construction of a 2.3-megawatt, large-scale, ground-mounted photovoltaic installation at 190 Electric Avenue, MAP 077, Parcel 0014. Applicant is Borrego Solar Systems, Inc., 55 Technology Drive, Suite 102, Lowell, Mass. Owner is William De Petri, trustee of the Interim Realty Trust, 259 Turnpike Road, Suite 100, South Row, Mass., 01772. Materials are available for viewing at the planning office, 960 Massachusetts Avenue, Lunenburg, Massachusetts, 01462.
Good evening. My name's Josh Farkas. I'm on the project development team at Borrego. With me tonight is Brandon Smith on our civil engineering team, and thanks for having us this evening. We basically, I'm just going to give a quick overview and then pass the mic over to Brandon and walk you through the project.
If I may, because I think there are people in the audience that would like to see, if you could put it similar to that so that people can see, I think it would, and we can see as well.
Thanks. Sure thing. Great, so I'll just give a little bit of an overview, so you understand where the project's coming from and what's been done on the development side so far. We've been working with the landowner, Mr. De Petri, for probably the last eight or nine months in preparation for coming to you this evening. We've signed a lease option agreement with the landowner, so we do have site control, and we have our paperwork in with Unitil and through the interconnection department and the processing through all that. So as we've kind of pushed further along and completed our site discovery, that's what's put together our plan to date. And essentially, this is an underutilized piece of property off of Electric Ave to the east, on the eastern side of the page, the right side, and then Massachusetts Ave is to the north. The frontage is in the southeast corner, where we'll kind of show our proposed access, kind of an overarching explanation of how and why the system is shaped as it is. There are a couple utility easements located surrounding the property, a right-of-way for the utility lines to the north and west, and then there's another easement running east to west to the south of the system. So that's kind of become our boundary on that edge. I'll let Brandon take it from here. But I will, I will say that in the northeast corner of the property, and overall, we're trying very hard to follow the bylaw as closely as possible. In that area, you'll notice that we've proposed a buffer strip of 100 feet of existing vegetated forest. We understand the bylaw requests 200 feet unless the applicant can show that you can basically screen the project with less. So we're here to basically try to be as, you know, reasonable as possible to accomplish the spirit of the bylaw, to hide this project and screen it appropriately. The reason we've had a 100-foot strip there is mainly due to the shade characteristics from the trees and the topography, which Brandon can walk you through in a few moments. But we're definitely here to develop responsibly and do the best job we can to meet the spirit of the bylaw, and are definitely looking forward to the planning board's comments from our initial layout. So, thank you.
As Josh mentioned, my name's Brandon Smith. I'm civil engineer with this project, so I'll just walk through real quickly the high-level components of the project.
You can take the microphone off and walk to the board if that's easier.
Yeah, pull it off. All right, yeah. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You don't have that? Oh. So as Josh mentioned, this is the electrical easement to the north and the existing utility gas easement to the south. The project site is nestled between those two, covering approximately 10 acres within the fence. Within that fence, there are solar modules mounted on a galvanized steel racking that has an augured screw foundation, so no foundations, no pored, you know, footings or anything like that. To accommodate that racking, there is a bit of grading that will need to be taken place that will be all done within the facility area. There will not be any export or import of material, however. Power generation from the modules will be brought to the equipment area. This is the electrical equipment area to the kind of the northeast of the site. That's where any transformers, inverters, that type of thing, as well as our energy storage units will be located there. From there, I should mention that the entire site will be surrounded by a seven-foot chain-link fence per National Electric Code. We will have a vehicle gate here kind of on the east side. We have received comments from Chief Sullivan regarding access, emergency vehicle access, and to accommodate him, we're going to add a Knox box to the gate so that emergency personnel can access the site anytime, along with a placard with emergency contact information. The access will be via gravel access road. There is a wetland crossing here, so as Josh mentioned, we're kind of up against the utility easements on the north, west, and south, as well as a wetland to the east. So that is another reason that we're hoping to responsibly move into this buffer a bit. Power is brought to the grid via underground trench all the way out to this area of the site, kind of the eastern area of the site, where it will rise up with some utility poles. We have a total of, I believe it is 10 utility poles along this access area. Access is onto Electric Avenue. Per Graves Engineering's comments, we are going to add a paved apron to protect the edge of the pavement on Electric Avenue. Just a quick overview of kind of where we are from the engineering perspective on the project. Graves Engineering did provide us with comments on Friday, last Friday, and we have responded to those comments. Didn't have a chance to make it into the plans, but I have provided responses to all those, which I believe are part of your packet today. And of those comments are really, I think we can include all of their comments really into the plans without any issue. But other than that, I'll open to any questions that the board may have.
Open it right up. Where's the 100-foot buffer that you were talking about earlier?
So, so per the bylaw, solar bylaw require 200-foot buffer. This would be, so here is the 200-foot buffer, and this would be the 100-foot. So we are maintaining 200-foot setback and kind of buffer from the property line for any equipment, but the actual vegetative buffer would be this 100-foot strip.
So on the plan, that's the darker green is vegetated and the lighter green is not?
Correct. The lighter green, so it is vegetated, but it's no trees. This would be, what we do is we, it will be seeded with like a solar farm mix, so it would effectively be like a meadow, but you know, knee-high, need-to-waste height grass.
Okay, well, I hate to be the stickler, but I have a problem with that, just because it's, the 200-foot buffer is supposed to be for vegetative buffering, so that people don't see it. So you're going to have to show me that I can't see anything from the neighbor's yards.
I would echo that sentiment.
Yep. It's been a pretty consistent feedback that we've heard from all these projects. Typically, we'd only waive any of that buffering if the geometry or topography of the property made it such that you couldn't see the field from the property lines.
Yep.
So if you can, then it's typically not a candidate for the lower buffering requirements.
We did, so as part of the plan, we did provide a cross-section kind of showing what the topography is. It does, does go down as you go south, west, but it doesn't completely, you know, the topography isn't so much so that you wouldn't, that would be impossible to see the facility. We would be relying on some vegetative buffer.
The other issue that I have is, it's still within the buffer, but the energy storage equipment, the electrical equipment, everything is within that non-vegetated area, and there is, you know, just outside of that non-treed area. So that is going to be visible to the adjacent properties, and I am not in favor of that.
We, yep, we, do you want to?
Sure, so one of, you know, one of the reasons we led with the 100 feet basically comes from a shading perspective and, you know, seeing that there was, there was some language in the bylaw that said if we could, you know, if we could solve the problem, then there would be an option there. So we do have a proposed alternative plan, which is not part of your packet, which I can hand out in a moment here, that basically shows how if we were to clear to that 100-foot area, we could do some vegetative plantings, along with place some privacy slats, some green slats into the fence line, which could, could basically add additional screening. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to maintain system size up in this corner right here. As we found this wetland to the, sorry, I know people are trying to see, as we found this wetland here, we inherently became space constrained. So we see this as the opportunity, and I'll pass these to you in a moment, to show you some of the screening that we'd propose adding to this plan. But we just, we wanted to get, have an understanding of why exactly the bylaw was written the way it was, and also get some feedback of this particular site, because based on the topography and the existing, the existing trees to this area, we do think it's pretty well-screened. I think it's very difficult for any project to achieve 100% screening, especially based on certain types of year when the leaves fall off the trees and things like that.
Great, that's why we have the 200-foot buffer.
Yep.
So that we make sure that we get some screening in there.
Thank you. Thank you.
limit rather than down near the fence. We did that because of the topography. We felt that up higher, because it's sloping up towards the residences there, that would provide a better, you know, screen more of the system rather than down from the fence. So that's why, that's the location there.
The plan says six feet tall at planting. What's the expected height of these trees?
So the trees that are proposed there, the white spruce?
Black hill spruce, yeah.
Yeah, are, those actually have a mature height of, I believe it was 30 to 40 feet. So they get quite large.
Now, two feet per year?
Yeah, yeah, around one to two feet per year, their growth rate. So that mature height obviously would take some time, but at the beginning, they do grow fairly quickly.
So at the, at the six-foot height and the topography of the property to the highest elevated panel, what is the elevation of screening at the closest property line? So basically, how high do you have to be at the property line to see over your screening onto the solar field?
So that, that varies depending on the topography and depending on the residence. If you look at the last page of the plan set, there are some cross-sections that kind of help illustrate what we're looking at here. So for example, from the second cross-section, cross-section two on Sheet 6.0, that's kind of representative of these residences here, you'll see that really, if we placed, and I think this is the one that I included on the screening plan that Josh just handed out.
out, you'll see that actually a six, even a six-foot tree would screen the tops of the panels pretty well. And it's because of that topography, it rises up as it gets close to that tree clearing limit.
So that diagram shows the people standing at the property line?
No, actually, they're standing at basically what would be the residence.
Okay, but most of those homes are probably elevated?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so theoretically, if somebody's standing in their living room looking out there eight to 10 feet above?
Above that.
This elevation?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, whatever the difference between someone's standing height and someone's standing in their living room, yeah.
And the solar racking is showing it tilted towards those homes, but doesn't it actually face, or is it just?
Uh, yes, actually, that's, that is a good point. That's an error on these plans. The top height is accurate, though.
Okay. So would it?
It would be mirrored.
You'll look at the back of the racks.
It would be mirrored, yes.
Side, I would think, yeah.
Side of the racks, yeah, so you'd.
Yep.
It would be facing southern.
Yes.
I don't know, you're going to see it from Pleasant Street anyway, either way.
Well, you're going to get more of a profile.
Yeah, backside, like, looking, the front's this way, you're going to be looking at that angle.
Well, these homes are on the east side, though, so they're going to be looking at the side of the rack.
Yeah, correct. The panels are in like this, so you're going to be looking at this.
Yeah. I think the main issue that we are trying to address is during the winter, really, and that's why we're proposing the evergreens, because during the summer, actually, it's got a pretty good amount of undergrowth in that area. So I think during the summer, you know, spring, summer, fall, you know, adequate screening close to 100% will probably be almost achievable, but during the winter is what we need these evergreens for.
Today, is there existing vegetation all the way through this whole area? This is all fully grown here?
Yes.
So you're going to be clearing this?
There is some existing clearing areas, like, you know, down towards the east of the site is already some cleared, and there are dirt roads or paths already cut through the site, but generally, yes, with the clearing.
What does it look like from the yards right now? Can you see, could you see the site through the existing vegetation? Are you going to remove good vegetative buffer and just replace it with something that's not going to work?
Well, we will be, if we are granted this, you know, permit to remove it within this 100-foot buffer, we'd obviously try and, we think that the proposed screening, we have the double row, would supplement it or provide adequate screening.
Provide, but it wouldn't be better than what's there now?
Correct, correct. There's large, there's large trees there, right? So if you've got a 30, 40, 50-foot tree, especially on this portion of the property, that shade line is going to be, you know, roughly two to three times the size of the tree. So a 50-foot tree will cast, you know, up to 150-foot shadow at certain times of the day. So we want to, of course, avoid installing solar in that area. So, correct, there's definitely more vegetation there that would be removed.
So you'd have to cut your system size down quite a bit because you have to move that all back to compensate for the shade?
Correct.
So you'd be probably taking a third off a year.
Yep, so that's the crux of the issue and why we're proposing it as such. We'd much rather come in here and follow the 200-foot buffer if there was more space to develop to. We don't want to go on the other side of the utility easement, because then you'd need a whole separate access point. You'd almost have two systems, and that would be a small one that, it would be very close to the Mass Ave residences up to the north. So we're kind of stuck with the area that we have pinned in between a wetland and a few utility easements, which, you know, honestly, those are characteristics of a good site, you know, when you're surrounded by some areas that aren't going to be developed. There's very little, little going on in utility easements and things like that. So we're definitely squeezed here, and we're trying to, we're trying to fit a system, you know, that essentially can pay for, you know, high interconnection costs, you know, through the end of the development here.
So what's preventing you from getting closer to the utility easement and just shifting it towards the utilities, as long as you don't, you don't impede on the easement itself?
So the fence line is set right on the edge of the easement. There's some wetlands down here to the southwest corner, which we had hoped to have more room. But basically, you know, the actual easement is a little bit wider than is, like, the granted easement is wider than what's cleared, so we've got to stay to a limit of that. And then the fence line has to basically be out of that area, and then the panels have to be 20 feet from the fence just to provide access for vehicles to go around the system. So there really isn't much more space.
Tight as you can.
Yeah, we're pinned as tight as we can, correct.
And if you look here, they've got the 200-foot setback.
Mm-hmm.
Outside as well.
And that setback is all fully vegetated, right, on this side?
Mm-hmm.
You can see what's there for properties, but there aren't any residents in that area, right?
Yeah.
It's just another, looks like another utility easement on that side?
Whereabouts the other solar field?
This property butts Twin City.
Oh, really?
And then it backs up to Townland and backs up to another undeveloped parcel on Pleasant Street.
Okay.
So this property in the rear comes down to a point. The town property on the corner, the hairpin turn on Pleasant Street, comes out and goes back into a point, and then there's a property on Pleasant Street that the former owner of this is also the former owner of that, also comes back to a point. So they all sort of converge deep into the woods. So really, Electric Ave and Fitchview are the places where there would be residential impact from this. You know, and as I said, Twin City Baptist Church is to the south.
It's not entirely true. The people on Pleasant Street will see this going up the hill, across their backyards. So you know. Some people will.
This is Pleasant Street here, right?
Yeah.
Rises up 100 feet up the hill. You look across the streets, you can see, you know, the church, you can see this land.
You can see this church here?
Yep.
From Pleasant Street?
Yep.
From their yards or from?
Yeah, from their yards.
That's a lot of vegetation between here and there.
It is.
That's like.
It's at the top of the hill. Just saying.
Yeah.
You'll look across the one that's there, and you'll see that one up above it.
So I can't tell from this map, but what's the topology, Dave?
It's flat. It's flat, it goes down to a river.
Yep.
Okay, so if you follow the lower solar field, it goes, comes down here into the woods, there's a river that goes through, a little, here we go, a little river.
Oh, you got a contour?
Down through here, and then it goes, it starts climbing up the hill. There's the church, church is at the top of the hill, this is all at the top of the hill. So these houses down here, well, not those so much because they're downhill.
So this goes down and back up, so this is the valley here?
Yep. So you'll be looking uphill at this.
They're looking at going up the hill.
It rises about 100 feet.
Okay. Trucker's right there.
Okay, this is the Pleasant Street site.
So you love, you can see a local, you'll see a far one.
The hill at it. And then over here is Walmart Mountain, which you can also see.
So they have lower solar and upper solar to look at?
Yeah.
Nice.
Mr. Chair, if I may, of course, hear some comments from the public and try to get a feel for what the residents think.
Certainly, certainly, this is a public hearing, so is there any, is there any public that wants to speak on this? Questions, comments?
If you could just put them, either give her the mic or put it back, either one.
And as a reminder, anybody that's here for this public hearing, please sign in, the sign-up sheet.
Hi, good evening. My name is Emily Kelly. I'm a resident at 39 Fitchview Avenue, the very lower end. I am still going in a butter. I am a proponent of solar power, and I'm here tonight basically just in support of this. I have seen not in its entirety like we've gone through tonight, but I have an overall picture of the project, so I am here 100% in favor of this project.
And where is your residence in relationship to?
39 Fitchview Avenue, the very end of Fitchview.
So to the north, on the other side of Power Easement, second property from the end of Fitchview on the abutting side of this, the northernmost portion of this property. So this property extends beyond the other side of the utility easement?
Oh, so you're on the other side of the utilities, okay.
Yeah.
Right here, okay. Yeah, so she has full buffer?
Yeah, she gets full buffer.
So anyway, I'm just here really to offer my support to that. You know, we've been dealing with some proposed developments that have been talked about over the last couple of years. I've been on this property for over 23 and enjoy it very much. Again, I can't wait to get solar on my own home. And so when I found out that it wasn't going to be developed in any way with regard to housing, first thing I had heard was stack maybe duplex, triple-decker, something, travel every day to work off of Electric Ave into 13, certainly, you know, have to fight that every day. So when I heard about this coming forth, and I'm just, I'm behind it 100%. To your point, I don't know where it is. I mean, honestly, I can't imagine that, looking at this particular layout now that it's going to impact me whatsoever with regard to visibility. I just know we won't have any noisy neighbors or added traffic behind my home. So that's why I'm here this evening, just to lend my support to the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have to leave. I've got a family issue to deal with, but I'll be back. Okay. Is there any, any further public comment? No? All right.
I don't know if they heard you, did they?
Was there anyone else that wished to speak on this? No? Yes? Well, thanks.
Ralph, 80 Electric Ave.
What was your name, I'm sorry?
80 Electric Ave.
What was your name, I'm sorry?
Ralph.
Ralph.
Tragott. I've talked to Mr. De Petri on several occasions. Seems to be a man of his word, and I don't have a problem with his solar project. I'd rather see that than a housing development. Solar panels make for a nice, quiet neighbor. And I don't think it would have a great impact on that area. I've lived there for 40 years. You know, it's not really a buildable piece of land, so, like I said, I would rather have solar panels instead of housing, excuse me, housing development. Makes sense. That's all I got for now.
Thank you.
You said 80 Electric Ave, is that correct?
Yeah, the utility easement runs right into the front corner of his property, 381 Mass Ave Realty Trust.
Okay.
Okay, so that's 80.
That's 80 Electric.
Is there anybody here that is within the visual buffer that wants to speak? Because both of the proponents spoke are outside of the visual buffer impact area. I was just wondering if there was anybody that was within it? Okay, can I ask a question?
Of course.
Did you actually talk to all the residents along Electric Ave that would be visually impacted? This buffer plan that you have here is structured specifically to help certain residents along Electric Ave, because they're the ones that will be visually impacted. It doesn't appear that any of them are here tonight, so I'm curious if you have spoken to them already about the plans and what their impact would be out of the view of the back of their houses.
We haven't spoken to them, and speaking to our landowner, Mr. De Petri, the two neighbors that he had a relationship in contact with are present here this evening. They were all notified through the, you know, butter notifications, so we haven't had an opportunity to speak with anybody else yet.
Yeah, I'd very much like to understand what the, what the sentiments of the individuals that are going to be directly visually impacted by this. I'd encourage you to reach out to the residents along Electric Avenue and have a conversation with them about what your plans are and how you are thinking of mitigating it. Maybe encourage them to come here and speak in public forum as well. But I'd really like to know that you have the cooperation of your neighbors before I would approve any changes to the 200-foot buffer. And I know if we don't approve that 200-foot change, then you guys are going to have a significantly smaller field there. So if you, if your goal is to have the larger field and mitigate it with auxiliary buffering, it's in your best interest to get the neighbors that are going to be impacted by it to support it.
Sure. Mr. Bernie, have there been any communication from any of those neighbors through your office to date?
None that I have been present for. I don't believe anybody other than.
Just the gentleman that's in the audience.
Yeah, just gentleman who is here in the audience that have come in and had any questions or desire to see the plans at this point.
Got it. Mr. Chair, should we work through your board here in contacting them? Because I know we have reached out as far as maybe phone numbers on file or things like that, other than the house, the house phone, which people tend not to get those messages or even pick that line up. Is there any assistance that we could have from the board on that, or should we just do our best to contact them before next hearing?
You're certainly welcome to reach out. However, there is the open meeting law. The discussion between you and one member could lead to potential conflict, I mean, multiple members?
I think he, I think he meant the office.
He's talking about reaching the individuals there. Is there a better way through our office to get in touch with the others to collaborate with them?
I think it would, I would echo Mr. Chenus' sentiment, said I would want to hear from these people who are directly affected because of the reduced offset. So I would recommend whether you do that by letter, whether you go house to house, but I would recommend that you get some assurance from them that they do not oppose it.
If you have the assurance and they're representing you that they have no problem with the offset, then this board is much more likely to say, yes, we'll make the exception and allow the proposed buffering. Without that, it's hard for us to give that benefit to you and a negative impact to the resident.
Makes sense.
Because the bylaws there to protect the residents, and if we supersede the bylaw and then, after the fact, you go there, you cut all the trees down, then the neighbors come, what's going on? And like, oh, yeah, I didn't really realize that was actually going to happen, because the bylaw says this, and then all of a sudden, this other thing happened that I wasn't expecting.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I totally agree. I think it makes sense. I think our goal is to meet the same goals of the bylaw, to screen the project as best as possible. We're just saying, maybe instead of 200 feet of straight, you know, vegetation, it can be the 100 feet with some very selective located plantings. And one of the other things, basically, the topography with these homes being up higher, you know, we've had some projects in other towns like this where it actually makes more sense to plant up much closer to them at their level, so as they're looking out their yard before the topography drops down. So that's something we'd be open to as well. That's probably half the reason that we were holding our screening plan kind of off to the side to see if, just to hear more about specific requests. But there's a bunch of options.
Other projects we have worked at as well, where a landscape architect was willing to work with the actual town, the folks that lived on the properties and have plantings on their properties in selective locations to help screen it, and a buffer fund was put aside for that purpose on that other project as well. So there can be lots of flexibility, like I said. The key is to get the support of the neighbors.
Got it. So just to be clear, so it's the, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Looks like there's, is that 7 abutters on Electric? Okay. Okay, yeah, we'll make, we'll make every effort to contact them, talk through with them.
Yeah, and I think you need to talk about their specific concerns relative to that offset, and as Mr. Chenus said, perhaps, to what you can do to mitigate that. The public hearing notice that they received doesn't indicate that there's a, there's a reduced offset, so perhaps they, you know, said, well, it's 200 feet, and I'm not going to see it. So until I'm assured that they don't have an issue with it, I would not be in favor of it.
Okay. Can I ask, just on a broader view of the project, I know we focus mostly on this because it's kind of the sore thumb of the project, but from the perspective of the other requirements of the bylaw, is there anything else we should discuss?
I assume they met all the other, other.
It certainly appears so.
The package looks really complete from what I was able to gather.
There's some additional.
There's some additional work needed on the stormwater.
There is. I mean, and I think that they recognize that there are some engineering issues from a more detailed than a global perspective. And I think that what I heard tonight is that they hear those issues and they're willing to be able to work them into the plan. Obviously, we're going to need a clean bill of health from the review engineer, but that's certainly something to take into account. What I will put on the table as well is, in speaking to some people who do solar field reviews in the field, who deal with permitting these things and constructing them in some aspects, you mentioned meadow mix, that gets knee-to-waste high. There's some who believe that clover can be a better carpet. It doesn't get more than 6 or 8 inches high. It has a very tight weave. It provides that similar meadow habitat, doesn't require vegetative management, and it's really, really robust. And I think that for something that has a disconnected impervious, similar to a solar field, that's something that, from our perspective, we'd really like to see. So you may want to consider...
Sure.
Some influx of clover. I know, I don't know, have you been to see Conservation yet?
Nope. We're in with them, and I think...
They're also...
February 6th meeting.
They're also very big on pollinator habitats in areas where you're edging wetland or working in the buffer zone. So you may want to hold off on really nailing down how you want to lay it out, get their Globally and specifically within the country, we're seeing lack of pollinators, and we're trying our best here in town, mostly through the efforts of the Conservation Commission, but these projects are a perfect opportunity for it to install habitat where and when we can. So certainly, that's something I'd advise you to probably take under consideration.
Sure. We've had an informal, much like you and I did, Mr. Bernie, we had an informal meeting with Mr. Morrow, going over the initial discussions for that. So we're set to come in on February 6th, where I imagine we can accomplish quite a bit along those lines.
I mean, they have the bond they're proposing. We had spoken about it being a fully funded upfront. It appears that way in what I read, unless I missed something. The fire chief has expressed he doesn't have any major concerns, as he has previously on these type of facilities. So, you know, it's a fairly benign use outside of people's visual impacts from a service perspective and from a land use perspective.
So I have a question about the wetland crossing. That's noted as an existing road?
Yeah, there's an existing dirt path that crosses the wetland there. It's kind of a makeshift culvert. I wouldn't necessarily even call it a culvert. It's like timber mats crossing the wetland area. So we're going to replace that with a properly designed culvert. So there will be some impact there that we're going to, that's one of the reasons we're going through the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, I think by way of history, the previous owner had done some, I guess I'll call it excavator logging, where there was some trees that were felled using machines as opposed to traditional logging methods. And I believe that some of these, I don't even want to call them cart paths, because they're probably a little bit more than cart paths, and some of these crossings may have been created through that process, so.
More of a logging trail.
Like a very rough...
It's somewhere between cart path and logging trail.
Yes, I agree.
Was there an analysis to see the alternative northerly of the access along the easement?
Access, I'm sorry, do you mean accessing from the north?
Yep.
Without accessing, the topography up here, do you mean adding an entrance to Electric Avenue up this way? There is frontage, but it's, the topography is very steep. It would entail providing significant amounts of fill to get that, the access road up to the level of Electric Avenue, and then there's also a...
Pump station.
Yeah, as well as a guardrail that we'd have to work with.
There's a lot going on up on that little piece of land.
Sure.
Yeah, unfortunately, not very feasible.
I think the reality is that topography and utility easement and sewer pump station are probably the reason there isn't a residential development back there right now, because it's limited the frontage to the 50-foot strip on the south of the property, which really isn't enough to tempt anyone to build out a significant development without some wiggling.
Yep. Well, I'll leave that to Conservation. I was also going to comment, well, I am going to comment, on the location of your silt fence. Since your disturbance is so far uphill, I don't know why it would be so far back. But, oh, you're clearing trees, yes.
Right, and we are going to be adding, that was one of the comments from Graves Engineering, we're going to add additional sediment erosion controls that are going to basically be phasing as they construct, you know, allow it to move with the disturbance. So we will be adding more. We've actually had a lot of success with wood strand berms on other sites, because there's tree clearing, so there's a lot of material for that.
I'm sorry, what was that?
We've had a lot of success with wood strand berms, basically like chip the woods, the stumps, chip them up and use them as, you know, sort of a filtration.
Thank you.
Excuse me, who did you say 96 was? Or this, it's hard to read with the line going through it. It looks like 96. But who did you say that this property belongs to? Because that's also impacted by the 100-foot restraint reduction.
I think that's the town.
Is that the town property?
Oh, Pleasant, oh, I'm sorry, that, no, I misspoke. That's the solar field on Pleasant.
So this is actually owned by the other solar field?
Which one, which property?
Probably this one idea. It looks like 96, but the line's going right through it, so it's hard to read. It's the property right behind Twin City.
To the southwest of the array?
That's owned by New Gen. That is the Pleasant solar field.
So that's your solar field?
Yes, and then the terminus at the west of the property is the town land.
So more than likely, they wouldn't have a problem with the reduced offset, so?
I would expect not.
This parcel, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but was part of that parcel back when that project was permitted, and then this was subdivided and sold off. And I believe this parcel, prior to our owner, was in some level of default or bankruptcy with the town. So it was purchased out of that, and I think a use for this property is something that, you know, is limited to the point made earlier about lack of frontage to the north and only 50 feet to the southeast. So again, usually characteristics that are, you know, fit right into where we install solar. We're just obviously trying to work through that 100-foot northeast corner.
Thanks, Matt.
David's back, just in time to ask questions.
So I know a few of us have indicated that we'd like to hear from the residents or have some assurance that the residents that are impacted by the reduced buffer, vegetated buffer. So I think I would like to continue this and give Borrego an opportunity to reach out to them and to get some information. So from a timeline perspective, what date would we be looking at?
Well, I certainly wouldn't want to speak for the applicant, and we have a requirement that all supplemental information be submitted by 4 o'clock the Tuesday prior to a meeting. Excuse me, our next meeting would be the 28th of January. Following that would be the 11th of February, and then the 25th of February. I would expect if you're looking to reach out to residents, you're probably in the ballpark of somewhere in February, both to allow your engineer to work his engineering stuff in a non-constrained time, but also to have that conversation with folks. And I guess what I would, what we tend to do is give the applicant the opportunity so that we're not putting them under the crush of when they need to have the information back.
I think the February 11th would be, would provide us with adequate time, is what we would prefer.
And when were you meeting with Conservation?
February 6th.
6th, okay. February 6th. So 6th to 11th, would that give them time? Probably.
To what?
To respond, to at least.
I mean, they would need to have the information to us prior to meeting with Conservation. And I think that there's, you know, it's, as with anything, there's goods and bads to that. They will have moved their project along theoretically to a point where they can get a better sense of what the planning board is thinking with new information submitted. They'll have a handle on what Conservation has told them, good, bad, or otherwise. And, you know, I think that hopefully they recognize, and I know this board will recognize, that sometimes it's three meetings, not two, and sometimes it's 12 meetings, not three. But it's, we're working a process and we're trying to move this forward, giving them the opportunity to respond in such a way. And if, obviously, if they go to Conservation and they say, "This is all wrong, and you need to change everything," they're going to come to us on the 11th and either say, "Well, it was all wrong, and we need to change everything," or they're going to say, "Listen," they're going to contact the office and say, "We've got some significant retooling to do, or we're not going to do this. Can we continue further?" And have that option as well.
So then there also is the question of what we had passed at the last time meeting, is that in effect?
It is.
Okay, so our time clock is as the state?
Correct.
So can you give us a, what is the end of our time clock on this? There isn't one.
The hearing is...
As long as the hearing is open.
Allowed to carry on as long as it carries on. The hearing closure starts the 90-day decision time clock. I've never seen this board come anywhere near not making a decision in 90 days from the close of a hearing.
Very good. Thank you.
So just so I understand, that it can stay, the hearing can stay open for as long as required, once it closes within 90 days of vote? Or is that the appeals period?
That, no, that's the vote. They have 90 days to render a decision.
To deliberate.
14 days to issue the recorded result of that decision.
Okay.
The filing of that with the town clerk starts the 20-day appeal period the following day. 90 days is an unusual amount of time for someone to deliberate outside of a very controversial or incredibly complicated project. I'm not going to say it will never happen or wouldn't happen to you, but it's not as usual.
Understood.
So I would make a motion to continue this public hearing to February 11th.
Is that time necessary?
6:35.
6:35, thank you. And that was the time that you, the date that you recommended, that you requested?
Yes.
So is there any discussion?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
This goes in there too.
So where are you now? I was supposed to be traveling this week, and my travel got canceled. So I showed up for a meeting, and they don't have my stuff.
Oh. I see, but you still took my big boy chair, is that it?
This was Dave's.
Didn't know this.
Mine?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
And this is Ken's.
Oh, and this is Ken's. All right. Did you already do Dick's?
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
This, I actually brought my own printout.
So, so here we are once again, talking about pot. Pot, all right. Recreational marijuana draft bylaw. Brought mine. All the edits I made, which are plenty.
I just realized that the...
All right, Paul made enough edits for everybody.
Oh, good.
Yellow highlighting when I print out blanks, what's below it.
These two printouts are my comments.
That's weird.
Do we have those?
Yes, you do.
What did you say?
I have two very long comment documents that you have.
I don't have them.
Yeah, well, you don't, but...
Well, I can share.
Oh, I haven't...
Oh, you know what?
You have extras?
Here, you can have my packet, because I brought my own anyway.
General comments, questions?
Here.
There's two of them.
I brought my own.
And draft regulations?
I can take those, thanks. Wow, it all cleared out.
So everybody was here for solar.
Solar, always a hot topic. Okay, so...
People don't want to speak.
I don't know. I guess I'll start this off since I wrote it. My goal was to take the things that we've spoken about over the past six months and try and synthesize them into a bylaw that addressed zoning, not operation, citing where it goes while trying to touch on ensuring that the other items that go into it are addressed. We talked a lot about craft cultivation, and I completely left it out of the bylaw purposefully, for a couple of reasons. One, we don't have answers from the Cannabis Control Commission at this time. Two, in discussing the drafting of the bylaw with town council and sending the questions to council, which you all saw the answers to, it seems as though most communities aren't addressing craft cultivator as its own use, because it's under the umbrella of cultivator. So it would fall into cultivation. My understanding, or my takeaway from a lot of the talk of how and why and where to regulate craft cultivator, seemed to me that the board wanted to allow for residents of the town on a small scale to participate in the industry as appropriate for their location. And sort of parlaying off the advice of Attorney Federoff from Mide Talerman Acosta, who is, I guess, their marijuana guru, because every time I send a question about that to Attorney Acosta, it goes off to Ms. Federoff. She recommended potentially, rather than trying to write regulations that specify this zone, that zone, in residential areas, allow it as a home business, to prevent the location of a facility on a parcel that's not a residence, and do it as a special permit, so each is judged on its own merit, and the individual conducting the business is required to deal with the impact as a resident as well as the business owner. So that's kind of where some of the size limitations came from in that home business. I expanded a little bit beyond just cultivation for processing and testing, just, I guess, I was just sticking my toe in the water and to see what would fly. And that's fine. Again, I, sometimes I'll err on the side of, let's see what's more, and let's dial it back, then start from a very restrictive place and just say, "Oh, that's great, let's move on," and find out that we have to go back and open it up. It's easier to dial back, in my opinion, than to open up. So I don't know if you, clearly I know where Paula is coming from. She sent very detailed notes, which I appreciate, and I appreciate that you broke them down between what you felt was substantive and what you felt was grammar or questions. I can go through those and try and respond to them a little bit, one by one, and then we can go further. We can go through the bylaw and look at it, section by section. I don't know how the rest of you wanted to do this. I don't know what the rest of you have for notes or thoughts. Okay. I have not had a chance to look at Paula's notes. They are certainly complete.
You'll find that about me, that I have attention to detail.
Because they can't be sent out ahead of time, because they're deliberation. Okay. So sending them to you would be... So I would love to go through these as part of my self-education.
I think we all have notes that...
Yeah, I think we should go through section by section.
That's fine.
Change the time and...
So I do want to, I do want to mention that I spoke to the chairman and I thought, because I've had a couple of conversations with farmers in town, and I thought maybe if it's okay with the board, if I could go to the next ag comm meeting and just address them directly about it, especially the craft cultivation, and see if they have any suggestions because, you know, if anyone's going to have any, I would suspect that they would, and then I, you know, could bring, come back here with those notes.
Yeah.
Because I've had some questions about things like, you know, well, what's indoor? Is a quonset hut indoor?
Yeah.
You know?
Can I just put a pop-up quonset hut and bingo, I'm cultivating?
Well, no, because you need to...
It has to be secure.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're, whatever you do zoning-wise, all needs to, you're not going to get to any of these special permit filings without a provisional license from the Cannabis Control Commission.
Yeah.
So in order to do that, well...
Yeah, unless you're in a co-op, and then the co-op has it and you can just do it.
Right.
And join the co-op.
Right.
This is one co-op license.
Well, that's the, but again, that's, that's the...
That's why I thought co-op should be...
That's the, that's the major question, is what is their policy or procedure for people joining the co-op?
Right.
Because if the co-op...
They have to make sure that they're compliant with the rules and regulations of the state. But they don't come to us for any kind of approval.
I don't, and I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think that that's where, I think if we put it in the hands of the farmers, you know, that they're the ones that can actually benefit from this, you know, the most. And I think, I think that's the way that it's going to make it in.
I would argue slightly differently. No, no, not, not to the farmers being, but to what Ken is saying about...
Okay, sorry.
They can just join the co-op and not have to come see us.
Correct.
Because each...
They just have to comply with, with the co-op has agreed to.
No, they don't. Each facility that is licensed, and if you're a member of the co-op, you become a licensed facility.
No, there's one license for the co-op.
I understand that, but there can be one license. So Neta Pharmaceuticals, which is one of the first ones to open, operates multiple facilities under their medical license. So they have a medical dispensary in Brookline. They had a medical dispensary, well, they still do, but it's now medical and recreational in North Hampton. They have a cultivation facility in Franklin. Under medical, it's a vertical license and you do all aspects of...
But that's not a co-op.
No, I understand that, but each of those facilities is inspected or was inspected by DPH. So each facility under a license would be required to be inspected by the Cannabis Control Commission to ensure that those facilities meet the requirements of the license. And my, my question, my, the thing that keeps me up at night is whether or not they would follow the same process for the location of those facilities as they would for an individual licensee in communicating with the town, which was part of my request to the Executive Director of the Cannabis Control Commission.
Would each one of them have to come before the town, give a...
One would think that they would.
Yeah.
But that's what you're getting at.
Correct.
But that's, that's the crux of the question, because the Craft Marijuana Cooperative, if you read through the marijuana regulations, it's very clear that cultivation has a set of regs, manufacturing has another, process packaging, branding has another. My question is, you know, if, if Matt is a cultivator and Dave is going to manufacture it and Ken's going to package it, how do all three of them need a license, or is it one license? And I believe it's one license.
It is one license.
But how do we ensure that each of those three facilities comply with the regulations? And who does that? That's the crux of the question.
My understanding of it would be, the Cannabis Control Commission ensures they meet the regulations of the Cannabis Control Commission. But you could have a co-op where you live in Townsend, he lives in Lunenburg, and Dave lives in Bolton.
Yeah.
And if one of those communities, so the way that it's been explained to us, us being professionals who've, or people who've attended some of these listening sessions, I've attended probably more than I care to at this point.
If they have any more, can you tell us?
Yeah, oh yeah, sure.
Please?
And, you know, this is going back two years at this point, but the, from Cannabis Control Commissioners, we've been told that the process is, and this is documented in some of the stuff you have, they hold a community meeting. We're going to, and it's required that they hold this community meeting within six months of application. So they come to the community and they say, "We want to locate a retail facility in your community." They need to tell you every license that they're applying for. Once they've held that meeting, they need to negotiate a host community agreement with the Board of Selectmen, or the City Council, but we're going to speak town, so Board of Selectmen. They sign that host community agreement. They go and they get all of their application materials together, their background materials, their financing, their cash bond, all of that good stuff. They put it together and they file license with the Cannabis Control Commission. Cannabis Control Commission begins their vetting of that license, and part of that is they send written communication to the town that says, "We have an application for, you know, the Planning Board Marijuana Cooperative, and one of their facilities is located in Lunenburg at 798 West Street. Can you permit this facility at that location?" And we go to our zoning and we look at our map and we say, "We can or cannot."
Okay.
Completely understand that, but the piece that's missing is a, by its very nature, a cooperative changes.
Mm-hmm.
And people join the cooperative.
Or drop out.
Or drop out.
Correct.
So a cooperative changes. The question is, each individual or each entity under the cooperative, what are the licensing requirements?
Do they have to come to the host community agreement?
That's the basic question.
Do the speech, do the, do they have to do each of those things?
Because it's one entity.
Or is it just the organization that comes in one time and says, "Oh, incidentally, we're going to be working with 10, maybe 15 people now and again in town, you know, and we're just going to have this one meeting." How does that work?
That is unclear, because, because the state has not, has not described it in any way.
So given that, I mean, I feel like we could talk about this for the next hour and not have any more substantial answers. I'd like to kind of take a step back a little bit and look at it purely from a zoning perspective, in that if we're going to let somebody cultivate, what areas in town are we going to let them do that?
Mm-hmm.
And, or manufacture. I mean, in my mind, we were pretty much on the same page with most of these uses up until we started the discussion about a small craft cultivator. Could we allow a use like that in somebody's residential zone? And I feel like we just, we don't have enough information to really get to the bottom of that, in light of the fact that hopefully we'll get information in the next few weeks from CCC, and also realizing that, my understanding is, they have more regulations coming out, and I'd really like some feedback from them that says, "Next year, if you change your regs and you change your tiers, so now a tier one license is 10,000 square feet, does that mean that Lunenburg has to allow a 10,000-square-foot grow where a 5,000-square-foot grow was permitted?" And, you know, but with all that being said, I think we, I'd like to see us focus more on the use table and get rid of all the low-hanging fruit that we can really build some consensus on, and then just narrow it down to say, "Okay, what can we do?" And let's also keep in mind that I could name a dozen examples where we've crafted bylaws and we've had the best of intentions going forward to, you know, redevelop a particular area of town and, you know, put zoning in place and economic development, and the result has not been the intent. And we can always come back to this in a year after we get better answers or more regulations from the CCC and open things up a little bit. But if we go into it and try to open up, you know, more cultivation in this area or that, we permit those uses and then realize, "Oh gee, this isn't a really great fit. We're getting a lot of negative feedback from butters and so on." Once a use is in place, the use is in place, and there's nothing we're going to be able to do to dial it back in.
I think that's true and not true. And I'll, and I, I think, well, in our bylaw, there's only one place where we limit canopy size, and that's at the home business. So whether someone has a tier one or tier 12 or whatever it is license in our industrial zone, since that's where the larger cultivation is allowed, if they increase that size, I don't know that it is affected by the bylaw, the way that it's written, unless, you know, they do that and the board or the community says, "Oh, we can't have 200,000 square feet. 100's really the most we can do." And I think from your, once a use is there, it's there, that's true and not true. With a special permit, which all of these are, it's therefore the life of the special permit. We can issue these special permits with conditions that there, should the business be sold or, or otherwise, the special permit becomes invalid, which is something the zoning board does on a regular basis and causes some people a little bit of anxiety. And so if, if, say, the board were to allow something in a commercial zone, since that's the one that's off the table, I'll just use that as a, as a good example, and we find that it causes a significant issue from the one permit that the board issues. You could change the bylaw and then you have to deal with that singular use, but it's that singular use and at the terminus of that use, it could, it could be no longer allowed.
True, but we have...
Which doesn't solve the problem, but it mitigates the, the future and long-term effects. And I think that's kind of where the, a lot of people have come from with the special permit angle, is it's not, it doesn't become a grandfathered use, it becomes a special permitted use. And so if someone were to close shop or move on for larger space, it closes that door as opposed to leaving that grandfathered use for perpetuity if someone continues it within the two-year abandonment window.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't it, it does still hold that use open on that...
Under the special permit.
Under a special permit, but they still are grandfathered in terms of use for, what is it, five years, 10 years, something like that?
No.
No.
Once the...
Only the special permitted use.
Yeah.
There's no grandfathering with special permit.
Yeah, the grandfather clause comes in if you had a use prior to zoning.
There are zoning freezes for A and Rs.
That's what I meant, zoning freeze, thank you.
It's, it's, that's only for A and Rs and subdivisions.
Oh, okay.
It does, it doesn't hold true for site plans and special permits.
Okay.
So, so I agree, we need to revisit...
We've been in court for that, though, have we not? Haven't they said that? We, it's, it's an allowed use, so therefore you have to give us the special permit? Isn't that a typical argument that they make?
No.
Well, if it's an allowed use, we do have to give this.
Well, yeah, if it's, well, if it's an allowed use, you don't need a special permit.
Right.
A by right use is a Y on the use table.
Right.
Special permit is a discretionary subjective approval...
Right.
By the special permit granting authority that needs to be vetted through the special permit process.
Okay. All right.
So I agree, we have to go back to Craft Marijuana Cooperative, and I haven't had a chance to see the letter you wrote the Cannabis Control Commission, but hopefully we can get some more information from them sooner rather than later.
Yeah, we have copies here and I did email it out.
Yeah, I just didn't have a chance to see it yet. So hopefully we get that answer, and I would agree with Tanner that we should, you know, kind of dive into the, into the
Sure.
Regulations. I do want to talk about the one thing that is important, I think, to the use table. If you look at the attachment to the general comments that I did, if you look at the second page, right now, as drafted, the regulations say 500 feet from a church, a school, a daycare, a recreation facility. So a couple of questions that I have is, I, so I went to the state website to look for all home daycares, and you can see a list on the second page, on page two of two, that identifies those in Lunenburg. One of the things that I found, however, and I didn't, didn't look into this and make a list, is Lemmonster, Fitchburg, and Shirley have tons of home daycares. So we'd also have to look at surrounding communities to check that offset. But one of the things that I think it was Dave that talked about is identifying what that looks like on the map, which is what Brookline did. So if you look at the next page, Brookline basically plotted everything and said, "Okay, what's the radius and what area does that leave in town?" So I sort of started to doing that, and it's not complete, but if you look at the next page, using the tool on the, on the assessor's website, I went through and said, "Okay, this is a school, this is a daycare, this is a funeral home. What does that look like?" And what I found is that by incorporating the home daycares, it gets pretty prohibitive. I mean, it encompasses a lot of area, and I don't know if that's our intent. So if you look, and you can see which ones I circled, and I didn't do all of them. But I just think we have to keep that in mind when we look at this and we look at the offsets.
Can I?
Sure.
Can I add a, addendum to that?
Yeah.
Where we're talking outside of home business, everything's concentrated in the industrial district. So we come, so I, and you and I had this conversation this afternoon about how I agree this is a useful tool and it makes sense. We can narrow that down a little bit by only having to look at those facilities that are proximal to the industrial districts.
Well, and I would disagree with that, because the home occupation component changes a whole thing. And I think, and I don't, although we talked about the industrial district, I guess it's a question in my mind, is, is that absolute? Has the decision been made that that's the only area it's going to be allowed?
I don't think it has.
So, so, so I think that that's something we've got to talk about. But the home occupation aspect, to me, changes that whole, it opens too many doors, in my opinion, without any kind of requirements on what is and what isn't allowed, because quite frankly, I wouldn't want to see a home business potentially cultivating manufacturing and processing. I think, and under craft cooperative, that could happen. So, so I have some concerns about exactly what is allowed as a home business. Secondly, I think that we have to understand what restrictions the, the offsets we're putting, put on the regulations. And when you say recreation facilities, I don't know what that means. What are recreation facilities? Are they, is conservation is considered passive recreation?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not quite sure exactly what that definition means, but I think we've got to look at that and the potential impact of that. So just, I don't think any absolute decisions have been made yet about where, but I think it was a useful exercise just for me to see exactly what that impact would be.
Yeah. So to help my addled brain, can we, can we start at the beginning and move through it?
Yeah.
So...
Which, which one are we starting with?
We're going to start with this.
Okay.
On 4.10.
Which one?
Well, I mean, can I ask that, because again, I, I haven't read your comments, and I'm sure they're very good from what I did read. Can you jump in when something applies? Because I don't, not going to know.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't mind...
It goes by section.
Okay. Yeah, it's in order, and I don't mind pulling them in as we talk about it.
Oh, okay, so we're going right, I see.
That's, that's, it's easier for me to logically move through the bylaw from top to bottom...
Okay.
As I see it.
Yeah, of course.
So the use table is there as it is.
All right.
I do have comments from Town Council, if you guys want a copy of that as well.
Oh, yeah.
Why not?
Just as a, as a...
Which one?
No, that's her handwriting, that's her comments. She wrote directly on it.
Any public comment from other towns?
And, and her comments here are, and there's an inadvertent footnote on the title marijuana cultivator, which shouldn't be there. And she recommends the addition of marijuana research facility as a use, which is essentially a non-commercial grow, process, and test facility. You're going to have to do a little studying to be able to read this, because I, I...
So, yeah, no, I understand that.
You're saying we need to get rid of cultivator?
No, I'm saying there's a footnote on cultivator that needs to go.
What does the top note say? May want to add what?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Research.
Research. And then she has 4, 4106, or 4106.
Okay, can we start with the use table first?
Yeah, that's where we are.
Okay, because, so, oh, okay, so...
That's an O, not a zero.
Okay, gotcha.
She's missing a use, that's what she's saying.
And...
So what part does she does not, is it that she does not like, under cultivator?
It's not that she doesn't like it, there's an inadvertent footnote there. There's a little three.
Oh, oh.
There's a superscript three.
Which I, which I'm curious why we have that in the actual use ones as well.
Because under, under the residential... Because under, under the residential districts.
Yep.
In those districts, this is the home business that I was talking about. So they would be subject in those districts to the home business restrictions.
But where is that three referenced?
Right there. Right, under the, under the use table.
Permitted as accessory uses and are subject to additional restrictions outlined in.
Oh, God, I didn't see that big giant three down there.
I try to be as obvious as I can, I'll, I'll try a little harder.
Well, usually, usually those scripts are at the bottom of a page.
Well, it's, it's at the bottom of the table.
I looked at the bottom of the document, I didn't see it anywhere.
Where, in the tables, we usually see them at the bottom of the table for uses.
Okay.
So these uses are only permitted as accessory uses and are subject to additional restrictions.
Outlined in, yeah, 415K.
Marijuana cultivator, is it?
In R A R B R O.
Okay, first of all.
So I inadvertently put a three in.
Okay.
I think we should kill testing facility in R A, R B and O. I don't see a residential home-based business testing facility.
I thought we were only allowing all of these in. I didn't know we were allowing any of these in R A.
I thought we were talking about cultivator.
We were talking about craft and craft allows product manufacturing and cultivation. So I took the leap
Okay.
of, why don't we try this out and see what?
What it looks like.
Yeah, what, what it looks like and what you guys say.
I think limiting it to cultivator and manufacturer makes sense.
Yeah.
Because that's also the two categories that they've limited this new term of license, this microbusiness that they have now.
It's not new, it's just they're getting more in vogue with it.
Right. But, but microbusiness is limited to the cultivator and product manufacturing. And again, the small, small canopy use. So if there is going to be a, a home-based business, they're either going to be a microbusiness or they're going to be a co-op member.
And, yeah, and if you look at 415K, it limits canopy to 750 square feet.
Yeah, I saw that.
And it limits total facility area to 1,500 square feet.
Yeah, I had some issues with that, too.
There's no way they're going to keep control of this stuff, it's impossible.
So before we get into all the details of that use in those zones, I guess my biggest concern would be just looking at it as an accessory use. And where we're not the licensing authority, do we have any ability to enforce anything? I mean, we have enough trouble getting people not to park.
Yeah, this is nuts.
In certain areas or clean a detention basin.
What, do you have a local CCC guy, like in town?
Sure that this board has the ability to enforce certain aspects, like as an accessory use. Okay, I've got a one-bedroom house and I put a tenant in there and he's going to grow marijuana. And he's got a 1,500-square-foot greenhouse and a 400-square-foot home. Is that still an accessory use when your greenhouse is four times the size of your home?
Same question.
I don't know.
It's too big of a canopy anyway, we don't allow it that big.
But I think before we get into those details, I guess, that type of stuff makes me a little bit nervous because it's, like, where do you go? How do you enforce this? I mean, as a, you know, if I put myself in the zoning enforcement role, I'd say I'm the building inspector, do I want to be knocking on people's doors enforcing this type of use? I don't think I would. So.
Yeah.
We talk about, we go back to talking about the zones. I want to, I want to understand, because I think the comment that's made by council is that cultivation is not always an accessory is important. Because if we talk about farmland, for example, that may be in R A or R B, there may not be a home on that property. So I don't think it should only be as an accessory use for cultivation, depending on where it is. Which again, goes back to that whole chart of looking at areas that potentially make sense.
Yeah, maybe just say that they are subject to additional restrictions as outlined and get rid of the accessory use reference.
Well, and if, if our goal is to help farmers, then I think you could look at acreage requirements. Because most farmers operate on larger parcels.
Yeah, but we talked, but we talked about this, we talked about this and we said even if you don't have the acreage, but you do, I mean, you don't need 20 acres to have a 750-foot greenhouse.
Yeah, no, as an accessory use, like if you have a small farmer that wants to do it at their home, then they'd have a smaller parcel. But what Paula's point was, well, maybe you own a piece of land and you don't have a home on it, odds are pretty good that that's probably a bigger parcel, not a smaller one.
I also think that this is not going to be allowed on APR lands because it's not an agricultural product per mass general law.
They're talking about changing it, have you read that? I mean, they're.
But they're, they're talking about changing it, but they.
Well, they're doing a study right now where they're analyzing all of the, all of the regulations that have been put in towns to date to determine whether or not there is a wide enough distribution of land accessibility for growing in farm communities. And if they're not, they're talking about turning that over and allowing it to be protected. So it's, it's not necessarily in our best interest to overrestrict it. Because they're saying, and they explicitly say, it's probably just better to read the whole thing, but they, I put a note in here, I'll give you the copy of it. But this is in reference to the December 31st legislature update, 2018, and what they're doing in 2019. So now they're collecting all of the bylaws that have passed, they're going to analyze them. Because what they have found, or what their complaint is, that they're getting from the farmers, is that they, all these towns are isolating the growing capability to industrial zones. And that is prohibiting the farmers from being able to participate in any kind of reasonable utilization of this capability.
Which is a very similar discussion to what this board had, not, not three months ago.
Great. So, so they're talking about already, you know, what, what they're going to put on the floor in 2019 to fix this problem if they perceive it to be accurate. So today, they're, the information is based on complaint from the farmers. So they're actually going to do an analysis of all the 2018 bylaws that passed through the legislature. So anyway, so there's a risk that overregulation is going to come back and bite. I think if we regulate with size in a wider array of districts, we have a better chance of that part of our bylaw still being able to hit, to hold up. As opposed to, if something does get passed where it says if a town has regulated it such that existing farms, the zones that they are in cannot grow, then they would be able to get on some other kind of bypass.
Well, so, so let me just ask this because I don't know the answer. Is there any way that we can, is there any licensing that happens? I know you have to have to, you have to prove that you make a certain amount of money off a certain amount of your land to become a farm, right? And you have to have, I think it's five acres, right? Is that what it is for, it's the state right now?
Well, farm refers to two things, there's physical location, a property of a farm size.
Yep.
And that's, that's pretty much five acres or more for the chapter program, for chapter 60.
Oh.
And then there's farming, which is an activity.
Okay.
Which is protected by our right to farm bylaw and by state.
Okay.
And that can occur on a minimum of two acres of land.
Two acres, okay.
Between two and five, there's specific income requirements.
Okay. But there is no licensing of a farm at present. Shoot, all right. Well, I mean, if there's a way to make it.
Depends on what the farm is.
Different aspects of farming are licensed. But the 48, section three exemption, which Matt was talking about, between two and five acres, it's $1,000 per acre of, I think it's income, not even profit.
That's fine.
And then over five, once you're farming, you're an exempt activity and no local bylaw can unreasonably regulate.
Just hoping that there was something that we could tie it to, that's all I'm saying. And it doesn't appear to be anything that we could tie it to.
So if I'm understanding what Ken was saying correctly, they're looking at potentially granting marijuana the same exemption.
Right.
I think.
You're looking at it.
Which, at that point.
No, but they're, they're not looking at creating the same exemption, they're looking at.
Some hybrid of?
Yeah, creating a hybrid.
If you meet.
That will enable farmers to grow even in restricted communities. And so I, that's why I said, I think it's in our best interest to structure a bylaw that doesn't prohibit it everywhere except for a given area. Now granted, if the town prohibits, prohibits it completely, then we're exact.
And it's prohibited, right.
Because it went through town vote and the whole nine yards and then it doesn't matter. But if we do not, if we vote to regulate it, my concern in reading into this, these dialogues that have been going on, is that if we say, hey, it's industrial only, like a whole bunch of other towns have done, then the farmers will have a following and say, hey, I live in one of those towns, industrial only, can I grow on my farm? And the state will construct an amendment to the law that says, if you're regulated this way, then you can allow that.
I don't think I could back that up anyway. I mean, I couldn't back it because I know people who, you know, I mean, the farmers really are looking at this, you know, as a way to save their farms, I think, so.
And it's, and I just want to point out, there may be land in outlining or other areas that are large parcels of land that don't have a building on them. So it's not going to be an accessory use. So I think Ken's point, I think it does what, what we're talking about, is these uses are only permitted and are subject to, no, these uses are subject to additional restrictions outlined in. Because they may not be an accessory use. And I also have some concerns about limiting it to that little gray, those two little gray corners of the town. I, I, I want to revisit that discussion. I did go back and watch all the meetings that you guys have had about marijuana.
The industrial zones.
The industrial zones. That's why I moved that map over, because I have to look at the colors. So those little two gray areas are the only areas we're talking about it for a non-home-based accessory use. And frankly, I'm not sure that.
Specifically cultivation?
Yeah.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, a marijuana research testing facility, for example, why would we not want that in our commercial zone?
Well, just for clarification, the, the little gray areas, I think are nearly 1,000 acres.
Well, the, the one on the Lancaster border is, I think it's easily 1,000 acres, if not 2,000.
So I know in terms of looking at a map, it's like, oh, it's a wedge, but it's, it's 1,000 acres.
Right, but I want to talk about the uses. I mean, a marijuana testing facility, which is going to be an innocuous, I would think, business, why would we not want that in the commercial zone? Or even a limited business zone? Why, why would we not want that?
I think our biggest challenge there was that our commercial is not purely commercial in terms of, if you go to Lemmonster or Fitchburg, you drive down John Fitch Highway, it's all commercial. There isn't a residence to be found.
Right.
You go through our commercial district and you'll have, you know, Abishon Hardware and then you'll have The Vet and then you'll have a random residential home. And then you have, you know, the mobile station, then you have Maze Field Road and then a couple more homes and then Kababalicious. And so the challenge is if you start putting 500-foot setbacks in from marijuana facilities from a residential use, you gobble up all the commercial real estate to the point where you might as well not even put it in.
Well, that, that goes back to the 500 question. I mean, that goes.
It's not just that, it's also the, the limited commercial that we have to develop. I don't know how much of that we want to give up to something like pot, which, which can be shunted off and no one's really going to miss it.
Well, and I would disagree with that. I think that, I think that for something, for a use such as a marijuana testing facility, a transportation business, I, I, we have commercial businesses that are empty. I think that to exclude them from the commercial or the limited business, perhaps retail, I think we have to be careful about where we put retail. But some of these other uses, you know, testing facility, research facility, transporter, why do we want to limit them all to that one area? Personally, I don't see any reason to not allow them in limited business or commercial.
Well, and I, just to kind of pick up on that, too, is I look at this in terms of, like, where we're trying to open up an opportunity for a craft cultivator or small-scale cultivator and manufacturer, I look at it in terms of, okay, if I was manufacturing wooden chairs, I could not build a facility and manufacture wooden chairs in residence A.
But I'm not talking about man, right, right, right.
And so how is that any different than I want to manufacture pot brownies and lollipops and all that type of stuff?
I thought we were not going to focus on craft till we got more. Because, because I have those concerns about craft, but, and I agree with you about, but I, I agree with.
Permitted in the commercial district.
Right, and I agree with you about manufacturing. I specifically said, I specifically said testing facility, transporter or research facility. Those are the three uses that I don't know why we would not consider in other areas.
Now, how does that work in terms of a craft?
Wait, transporter? Oh, research.
Research, the one that's not on the chart.
The one, yeah.
And testing, researcher and transporter. I don't know why we're not allowing them anywhere else.
But in terms of the craft opportunity, they sit under cultivator?
Correct.
So if we permit a testing facility, it can't be a craft?
No, but it can cultivate or manufacture, product manufacturing can both be craft.
But they couldn't be a craft? They could only, because a craft license is cultivate, manufacture and do testing, all under one roof.
No testing.
No testing.
No testing.
No testing.
Cultivate, process, package.
Package. So those three uses.
All on one roof.
Right.
It can be multiple locations that each do each of those things.
But my understanding is you, through zoning, I think we'd have a, could we only permit two out of the three?
I don't believe so.
So.
We keep getting back to the craft because that's so unclear. But I think we've got a, I think if we can talk about.
Need to think about this. I see what your point is, the research, the testing and the transporter are not, they're not.
Especially the transporter, because it's completely.
You don't need a lot of space, you don't even need a lot of signage. You know, you're basically an industry.
Yep.
House.
Think about, yeah.
Yeah. So you have a.
Someone wants to speak for a public comment, it is a public hearing.
It's not a public.
It's not a public hearing, it's a meeting.
It's a, it's a public discussion, right? No?
No, it's, it's an item on the agenda, no. We haven't got to the public hearing part.
No. It's up to you.
I understand, that's why I asked if you'd like to speak.
Yes. Katie Adams, Williams Drive. As a citizen, obviously for more of a prohibition. And so in regards to transporter researching and testing and how that plays out, because we've gone through these one night at a time over many, many months. And just going back to that, is no matter what, it's onsite marijuana, it's onsite drugs. So if I'm in a residential setting and next door, this person just has a huge warehouse that they're transporting of drugs, from my perspective. I mean, this is just my anti-marijuana perspective, which is with possibly 47% of the town, whether or not there's been a change in that. But you see people come in for, I don't want to be near a solar farm or I do, but I think there's going to be a lot of backlash once these places actually start to pop up or exist. Because right now it's all hypothetical or theoretical. And so if I'm next door to a property where they're just researching marijuana, there's just tons of marijuana there, they're studying, there still could be a fear of crime or a fear of security because it's, each one of these uses has onsite drugs. And I think that could be the way people like myself instantly feel. Even if there's logic to say, oh, they're just testing it. Well, onsite, it's a marijuana, you know, it's a marijuana location. I think just anybody who's against it in the way that I am, their first instinct is going to be, I don't want to be next to marijuana. No matter what that means, the store is just where people are going to buy it. But if you're not into that at all, then each use is going to feel negative to the person who's next to it. In terms of the, I, and I'll just mention it since I'm up here, the craft, it's very confusing to me and I'll read through it, but if you have these little residential businesses, I mean, I just don't even know what it's like to have kids being like, oh, they're just heading to so-and-so's house and they just make that small amount of marijuana lollipops there. I just, I'm so confused why we're so willing to let drug use into society like this. I think there's lots of unintended consequences and I think we should be very slow and careful. Thank you.
Thank you. So to her point, there are a couple of things that we cannot do. I don't think we can touch transporter, right?
What do you mean, touch?
Well, we, I think that the guidance we got was that transporter could not be prohibited, right? In town. You cannot prohibit a transporter. You cannot prohibit a research facility.
No, you can't prohibit transport from coming through the community.
Oh, you can, you can prohibit them from.
But to have a base here, yes.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that.
And you can't, you can't say, if you have marijuana, you can't drive through Lunenburg.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's obvious, but that's.
No, it's not.
It's obvious to me.
It's obvious, no, but I.
But, yeah.
There, there is often concern about.
Where you can't, you can't deny them.
I don't believe that that's the case. I don't believe that that's the case.
So, I, I think with-
I mean, just referencing our existing use chart, okay, and I'm taking this from industrial uses, but I'm just trying to draw some comparisons to what we're discussing now. Manufacturing, the only area in town we allow any type of manufacturing, if you're going to make wooden stools, or widgets, or whatever, is the industrial district. Distribution, the only area it's allowed is the industrial district.
Without a special permit?
No.
Well, Oak Ave is manufacturing wood products, correct? Or that property right in the center behind the gazebo?
They have a sawmill.
Uh-huh. That's manufacturing.
I believe is on a farm parcel, and I believe that the bylaw at the time had a specific call-out to a sawmill in conjunction with, wait, Oak Ave?
Not Oak Ave, I'm sorry, it's the one right behind the gazebo, yeah. So there are exceptions, is all I'm saying. The, the Woodery, for example, is not in our industrial zone.
They're a commercial business that, they, they don't manufacture. They're retail.
I would disagree with that. If you've ever been there, I would completely disagree with that.
But they're manufacturing something.
No, they're not. From, so, I, I think that, I think that we've got to be careful about saying the only, if you're going to make widgets, or you're going to make stools, or, because that's not the case. If you look at uses that are ongoing in Lunenburg, there are certainly individuals that manufacture some type of product, look right on Mass Ave, the person who sells beds that puts them outside once in a while. So to say that if you're going to manufacture anything, you can only be there is not correct.
But that's a home-based business, though. But it's a home-based businesses, we've always had that, that ability to, to do your, your own home-based business. You can make craft furniture in your basement, and then occasionally sell a piece of craft furniture, something like that. There's a problem with that, even in Residence A, your point, if you want to make stools, you can't. Well, you can if it's your home-based business.
And manufacturing, that's not what I'm suggesting. Manufacturing, I agree, has to be in the manufacturing and industrial area. That's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about specifically, again, is testing, researcher, and transporter. And, and I understand the concern about we don't want it in the community, but I think that we've cleared that hurdle with the prohibition. If people don't want it in their community, they have an opportunity to do so. Our responsibility is to craft regulations, and then to allow the public to give comment, and, and we may change that after we hear from the public. Personally, in my, I would, I believe this chart is way too restrictive. I, I think, I, actually, I think it's both. I think it allowing it as an accessory use, specifically when we talk about manufacturing and packaging, I'm not okay with that happening in individual homes. So, I'm concerned about that. So I think in that regard, it's too open, but I think in some regards, it's way too restrictive.
So let's do this. To reference this, again, and I'm, I'm just drawing the comparison to what is in the bylaw. I mean, I can drive around town and point out hundreds of uses that are in gray areas, many of which started before zoning even was here, but a research establishment, only in the industrial district by special permit, so if-
That's, research is in here?
Research establishment.
Okay.
Special permit, only in the industrial district, nowhere else in town. So if you're going to assert that, oh, we should open this up, then we better update the entire use chart, because I am not in favor of creating an opportunity for one specific industry, whether it's marijuana, car washes, gas stations, contractors' yards, if what's good for the goose is good for the gander.
Agree.
And I think whatever we craft here needs to closely resemble what we're already doing.
Agreed.
Or we're going to open a can of worms and go right back to the drawing board and say, okay, if you're going to research marijuana, you can do it in the commercial district, and if you're going to research anything, you're going to do it in the commercial district. So, I would be very careful about-
That's a good point.
... creating opportunities for a specific industry, because we feel like it's-
Right.
-a neat thing to do.
I would agree with that.
Glad you brought that up, Tanner, because our current bylaws, I think, are kind of a can of worms, because every time, in, in, in the seven years that I've been on planning, that we've gone into bylaw revisions, then we lead into others. We, and you've been here for, what, three or four years?
Mm-hmm.
It, one path always breaks into multiple others, and it's other sections.
Yeah. And it's a dynamic process. We should always be doing it.
I, I agree with that, but the flip side of that is, then, why wouldn't retailer be in commercial? Because it, we don't have retail stores in industrial.
Right.
So why are we restricting marijuana retailers to the industrial zone?
Right.
Well, and I think in terms of raw area, we, I don't know the exact numbers, but I think we have more industrial acreage than we have commercial, and I think the only challenge with retail in the commercial district is, again, getting into that residential thing. If you're, it, once we start talking about setbacks-
We're talking about two facilities someplace in the entire, in the entire commercial-
And we just said it should be equally required.
We said, we said we were going to cap it at two, because we can do that.
Have we established that?
Yeah, well, it's in-
Well, it's in the draft.
It's in this draft, and I agree with it.
I agree with it as well.
So if we do allow, if we do have to allow retail, then I would say we would only want two. They would have to be located someplace in commercial, and they'd have to be, have the distance offsets. So, you know, if the, if the smoke shop that's there today wants to turn into a retail establishment, and he has the offsets, then that, you know, could, could be one.
Yeah.
But that's more where I would picture a retail facility, not in the industrial.
So, can we-
A lot of it, too, is what are there for infrastructure?
Can we dial this in a little bit, and, and can we look across cultivator? And just, it's a good discussion, I don't want to stop the discussion, but I don't want us to go down the path that we seem to go down every time we talk about bylaws, and we, we pull apart different parts of it without going through individually, and then at the end of it, we're like, where'd we get? And we got nowhere.
Well, right now, we're on the table, and we're discussing on-
We haven't decided on the table, we're discussing the table.
Because we're not talking specifically about each use, we're talking about uses in general. So let's take cultivator.
I'm fine with it the way it is.
I am not.
No? Okay.
Unless we take away the accessory use.
So, your recommendation, Paula, is to take R-A, R-B-O, make it subject to additional restrictions, put a, a parcel size limitation on the upper side of things for-
Wait a minute, you, we're talking about use table.
Correct.
Okay? And you're, now you're going into the details.
Now you're going with someplace else.
What we're saying is that in the use table, you have a footnote, we're saying that the footnote should remove only permitted as accessory use and R.
Okay.
Subject to additional restrictions.
Okay, right.
That's it.
So we're saying these uses are subject to additional restrictions outlined in-
Is that, is that a majority opinion?
Can we just talk about, what's the yellow? Can I just ask? Because I'm not-
The yellow is R-A, dark yellow is R-B, white is outlining.
Okay. Okay, so we're not allowing that in limited business or retail, or commercial?
Which is the orange strip along 2A.
Okay.
Where it's just not going to-
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm good with that, then. If we take away the accessory uses, I'm good with that.
Okay. Majority opinion, yes, no, maybe?
I'm, I'm in agreement.
I'm in agreement, Tanner's not.
I don't think we have enough answers. I, you know, until we hear back from the CCC on the whole craft issue, and how all of this regulation's going to pan out.
I'm kind of a creep, and, and I'm, I'm behind because I haven't read all the comments. I was, and this is just an idea, is anybody in favor of just workshopping this on a special meeting? Any way we can do that, without public comment, you know, just have a workshop?
I'm absolutely in favor of that, but my, my issue is, I just want to add one additional comment. I think we are in crunch time. I think we have a responsibility to get this out to the public, to draft something. We may not all agree with it 100%, but we've got to get something out in front of the people, so that they have an opportunity to read it, to understand it, to comment on it, and we have an opportunity to bring it back. And when we talked to the selectmen and asked for them to put it on the ballot, which they did, we said we would fully vet this, and we would get public input, and I'm very concerned that we're not getting further along in getting something out.
Well, that's why I think we need to have a special workshop on it, just because it's chaotic at best.
Well, let's keep going through. We got one line covered, all right?
Okay.
Okay, we, we can agree, can we agree that, so, so are you saying that you don't want to see it in R-A, R-B, or outlining, no matter what we come up for restrictions? Is that what you're saying?
See what?
Take the craft off the table.
Yeah.
So you're saying you want industrial across the board, and that's it? That's what, Tanner? What you're proposing?
I wish I had more answers on some of this stuff, in terms of enforcement. You know, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of, how does this actually pan out? And I just don't, I feel like we're in a really weak position to actually make sure what our intent is, which is to allow people to do it in their, at their own personal property, is actually what happens. I, I've sat here for less than a year, and I can recount so many projects and situations where the intent of the bylaw is not what happened.
Right, but we also have to, we also have to get this voted into a town meeting. And so, what are the odds of going to town meeting and telling everybody that wants to grow in town, you can't grow in town unless you buy industrial property? I think they're going to vote it down.
Totally.
And they will be able to grow it in their house, on their own property, because it'll, it'll fall to the next most likely use case, which is going to be growing vegetables in your backyard.
Are we talking about growing more than 12 plants per two-person household?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's what I mean, if, we, we got to get some, we, I, I agree with Tanner, we need the answers from CCC.
We, we have to have restrictions in place, but they have to be logical restrictions that we think comply with what the town is looking to achieve.
I agree.
And the feedback that I heard from, I mean, obviously, the town is very split on this. 47% say nothing at all, and 53% say, yeah, we, we want.
And I'm not-
And we're trying to come up with that middle ground, and what I did hear from people is, I want to be able to have some kind of home-based business, so that I can either, you know, make lollipops, or I can grow some specialty plants, and participate in something that way. And so, I'm trying to, my goal is to try to allow that to happen without allowing whatever they want to happen.
Exactly.
Well, that's just it, and I'm not trying to be a stick-
Don't want someone putting a huge farming facility in their backyard and cutting down all their trees to do so.
And I don't want the stick in the mud that's always dragging his feet and saying, I, I'm opposed to this, but the reality of the situation is, we have a hard time getting people to not park in a spot we don't want them to park in.
True, correct. I also think-
We've been wrestling with these little type of issues for months and months, and they never go away, and so, when I'm faced with a decision like this, oh, I'm going to allow a new use that's never been allowed in town to start occurring in residential areas on, you know, historic par, properties with elderly and kids and all this type of stuff, it gives me reason for pause. And I probably know just as many farmers in this town as everybody else at this table, and I've heard the conversations, oh, I wish I could do this, I, you know, it'd mean a lot to me, I can make ends meet. But at the same time, just as much as those people have rights, their neighbor that wants the scenic vista and doesn't want to be associated with that activity has rights, too. And, you know, look at the solar meetings. I mean, we have quite a bit of turnout, and those get polarized. I can't imagine how those same people would feel if instead of solar panels, it was a greenhouse growing marijuana.
True, and the Cannabis Control Commission is going to leave this, we're going to be holding the bag on this.
But, but they'll all have an opportunity to talk. We're going to put, these regulations specify offsets, they specify, you know, we need, we have a responsibility to ensure we can protect the public, and those that don't want it as much as we can, but while also allowing those who do. Bottom line is, we have to get something out. And this, this, all of this requires a special permit. So through the special permit process, just as we do with solar, we're going to give the residents any opportunity to talk, and it's going to be part of our decision-making. Just as we did with this last solar hearing, we continued it in order to give those seven residents an opportunity to chime in. So, you know, I, I think we have a responsibility to put something out there, and I am not okay with just saying it can only happen in industrial. I, I'm not okay with that.
I think there's also a financial component, from a, from a realistic perspective, that isn't necessarily part of the zoning conversation, but is in the greater scheme of it, is, this isn't, this isn't making wooden chairs. You can't, you know, for, for a few thousand dollars, you go down to Home Depot and buy all the, the tools you need to set up a, a stool shop in your, in your back garden. There's a significant financial investment to be able to do this legally. And if you're, if you're doing it illegally, you're already going to be doing it.
Yeah, but that's, I appreciate where you're going with that, but that's not really, I, I don't know how many pot dealers you know, but I, I know a lot of people who will have the money to just come in, and if you give them the, the opportunity to come in and buy a house for quarter million dollars, tear the house down and put a field up, they'll do it. They don't care. That's money. That's money.
But can we go back to the, getting through the first line?
Well, no, we can't, because we-
Why? Because we're saying with restriction, are you saying, don't allow it at all?
No, I want marijuana cultivators, but I don't want 10,000-foot canopies.
We already, but that's addressed in here.
But, but we're going to talk, when we get, and that's in there.
That's fine, but I don't want to limit that in the industrial.
It's not limited in the industrial.
Where did we limit it to? Where, what are you saying? That we didn't limit it?
It's not limited in the industrial.
Okay, when did we limit it to 750?
It's outlined in 250 dot four dot 15 dot K, as the bylaw says.
So it's in there.
R-A, R-B, and O, there's a whole bunch of restrictions pertaining, now, I have issues with some of those restrictions, I need to-
Okay, so then, then let's go there.
No, no, let's get through the table.
We're trying to go through the table first, and then we'll cover the details second. But the table just says-
Well, I'm telling you-
With some level of restriction, would you allow it in that area with restriction?
So I got to look at the restrictions to tell you if yes or no?
Not these particular restrictions, but any set of restrictions.
Oh, okay, you just asked me about the zoning question.
We're just asking the zoning right now.
Try to get the zoning table nailed down.
Well, it's dependent. I'm sorry, but it's dependent.
So I said I'm-
Yes, but it's dependent. I want to see, I have limits, too.
Well, we'll change, though. When we get there, we can, we can always go back, but can we just get through the table?
Sure. Okay, yeah, looks like a table. All right, moving on.
Manufacturing, I'm not okay with R-A, R-B, or O.
Did we get past the first one?
No, I don't know.
You're not okay with R-A, R-B, or O, for manufacturing?
Manufacturing. I am, cultivator, I am fine with as proposed, as long as you eliminate the accessory use component, which is underneath the table.
But I think that, that defeats the whole-
We want what?
In outlining, if somebody owns 10 acres of land and outlining, and they wanna do cultivation, I think they should be able to do that.
But I think your intent is to allow it as an accessory use or as a standalone use with X amount of acres. Because if you eliminate the accessory use, you're undermining the whole purpose of allowing a small farmer to do it, because most small farmers live where they grow their crops.
Right, but we're just saying subject to additional restrictions right now. And I think we can address that in the restrictions section.
But what she's saying is-
No, I agree with her.
Eliminate the accessory use.
I, I, I agree with that, because the additional restrictions can include the parameters around what you can do based upon the characteristics of the property.
Right, you put that in the restrictions.
So if you have a-
That's not a home use then anymore. That's not a home use. That's a commercial use, and that's exactly what we run into with solar. We have nobody's door to knock on, nobody to answer for anything. They, they own the property, and they're gone. They could live in friggin' France, you don't know.
Even as an accessory use, you have limited control on that. They could rent the property to somebody and so on.
Well, I guess I'm saying, I don't, in, in outlining, where there's large plots of land that are not developed, I don't have a problem with cultivation. So that's the bottom line.
I think the intent and the spirit of that part of the bylaw would be to allow somebody to do it on a small scale and make sure that they're a resident there, so that they're personally impacted by whatever the use is.
You could, you could limit the property owner to being the business owner. If that was, if you were concerned about someone renting their property and having someone come in and open a marijuana business, we could, we could link the business to the property owner. You mentioned, or someone mentioned earlier, I'm sorry, I forget who, but someone having a 900-square-foot house and a 1,500-square-foot business. Maybe we do something where the floor of the marijuana business is, the footprint is no larger than the footprint, or no larger than the footprint of the house. I mean, there, there's ways to do this, and-
And that's the, the way the bylaw is crafted for accessory dwellings. You can't have a primary dwelling, and your accessory structure is, you know, three-quarters the size of your primary structure, so.
I, I think with the business aspect, it's a little bit different, because you could have a home-based business where you have a nice 1,500-square-foot ranch, and you've got a 3,000-square-foot barn where you're doing whatever you do, that's your business. And that, so that was sort of the way I was looking at this is, is to meet the offsets, the way that they're, they're put in there. You're not dealing with people who live on an acre, or even two acres in most cases. You're talking people who have a larger lot, and the footprint of that additional building is gonna have less impact on, on the visual of that lot and the, the surrounding area.
So can we-
The Village Center District, does the underlying zoning apply?
No, it's a hard district. It's not an overlay.
So I have to go back to what Mr. Prokofiev said earlier. It's quarter nine, we have town council here. I think we need to schedule a workshop just on this issue.
I only work here.
Can, can-
That makes sense to me.
Schedule it, schedule it.
So what, is there a night that works for people? Is there a, is there a night, can we, can we pick a date?
Six o'clock, sound good? Can people start at six?
Depending on the day, depending on the day.
Okay, yeah, me too, jeepers. All right, I bought, I've got one day, Wednesday, Wednesday's open for me.
I can't do Wednesdays at all.
Of course, well, we don't need you here.
Okay.
Of course not. Fridays?
Nope, Fridays, Fridays are out for me.
Weekends are out.
Fridays are the only available day for me, except for the 22nd, which, well, Tuesday, 22nd.
The 22nd, you can't do anything?
No, he can.
No, Tuesday, yeah. Friday, I have Fridays available and Tuesday, the 22nd.
Can we do a workshop on Tuesday, the 22nd, in the office? In the, at the, at the Ritter?
Can we do that, yeah? That sounds good. A week from tomorrow, Tuesday, oh shoot.
A week from today.
I can't do, I can't be here that night, and it's a holiday.
It's a holiday?
Yes.
That, that holiday we don't get, so it doesn't show up as a holiday on my calendar.
Uh, yeah, Tuesday, 22nd, I think I can do.
Six o'clock, we said?
Yeah, Tuesday, 22nd, I can't do six o'clock.
Okay, what time can you do?
Get here.
What time?
Uh, I can do seven o'clock.
I'm sure we'll still be here, is that okay, if we start early?
Well, I know, I think everyone should be here if we're gonna have a workshop, because I don't think it's-
We'll start at six-thirty, and I might be a little bit late. I, I have to, I come from Wall fam on Tuesdays.
Does six-thirty work?
Six-thirty's fine.
We'll, we'll go for six-thirty, Ken, and hopefully you can get here.
Better earlier, you know what I mean? If it gets past nine o'clock, it's like a pumpkin, you know?
But I will try to be there for six-thirty.
Brain starts dying around eight-thirty.
At the Ritter?
Yes.
Ritter.
I don't know if this is appropriate, Mr. Chair, but, and I don't know if Attorney Costa can answer this, but I'm wondering if we can ask him about the cultivation component?
You know what, I think we've already talked about the fact that we don't know as much as we'd like to, and we are pretty sure that the CCC has not finalized their regulations, and they are most definitely going to change that portion of it.
I just, we're not gonna have time before then. We're gonna have to get something out before then. There's-
You can update us before, before town meeting.
The CCC, they don't have an individual that goes out and talks to communities, do they? Can we invite someone from the CCC here?
Isn't Jen Benson on the CCC?
No, it's Flanagan, Jen Flanagan.
And I went to an event, and it was a workshop. And I approached one of the commissioners and an attorney that works with KP, who presented, and said, love to have you come out. Well, we're not doing that now, we're just doing group tours.
They're not doing that.
That was a while ago.
Can we just check and see if there's anybody that would willing to come out and talk to us?
They seem to be pretty busy, in general, if you call there or try to communicate.
It's worth asking, right?
So, just for clarification for my notes, manufacturing, are we in agreement that not in residential?
Depends on the craft cultivation answer, that's the thing.
Yeah.
Yes, whole-scale manufacturing for me, yes.
Yeah, but, but home manufacturing?
It depends on what's allowed.
Right, I, I think that, I think that there are people that express interest in wanting to be able to do that.
So you're, just so we're clear again, so you're saying that this part, right, will include that drawn out as, you can have it as an accessory use, right? You'll say it there.
Yeah.
Okay.
But isn't that only gonna be part of the craft cultivator? That's only gonna be-
We're not there yet, we're not that far yet.
That's the only opportunity.
If you wanted to establish a microbusiness, you could do it as well. It's just the overhead of establishing a microbusiness for a home-based business that's small probably is not in your best financial interest.
But you can only manufacture if you're a craft collaborative. Cultivator is not allowed to manufacture unless they are part of a craft cooperative.
You can be a microbusiness and do marijuana product manufacturing.
But you just said the microbusiness overhead is too tight, well, so, so people can't grow at home and manufacture unless they're part of a, of a co-op.
Well, you can't say they can't, but it's not financially feasible, because the license fees are high for the canopy that we're allowing.
I don't know, I'm telling you. I know, I know of a restaurant that bought a house and tore it down so they could get more parking. You know what I mean?
Where do you get this microbusiness part?
This is on the mass-
Okay, I gotta, I gotta investigate that for-
So the microbusiness is limited to cultivator and manufacturer. It's a different licensing fees, a reduced licensing fees.
Okay, I gotta look at microbusiness.
But it's still, it's implying a canopy of 5,000 as the minimum, as their max size.
Right, and we're not allowing that.
And we're, our canopy size is so tiny that, you know, it, it's hard to justify the license fees and the recurring fees on that, on a 5,000-foot canopy when you actually only have a 750-foot canopy.
Right, but just to be clear, right now, as it's, so unless they're a microbusiness or a cooperative, they cannot manufacture. It's prohibited. Under the Cannabis Control Commission regulations-
No, you can also have a regular, you could also get a regular license as a Class 1 or Class A.
You can get a manufacturing license.
Yeah, what's the lowest class?
It's a marijuana product manufacturer, it's not, there's no tier to it.
Correct, okay, that's, yeah, manufacturing license.
You can purchase marijuana from cultivators and convert it to other products.
Be, be careful, because that's not the way I read it. You can, a cultivator can purchase marijuana simply for the purposes of proper propagation.
Talking about a manufacturer.
Right, and that's what I don't want to allow necessarily in Residence A or B. Well, and the other part of manufacturing is you have to, if you're gonna, if you're gonna make lollipops or any kind of edible product, you have to meet the Food Service Code, and you have to be licensed through the Board of Health. So you'd have to meet that whole residential kitchen aspect as well. So there are other commercial kitchen. You can do, yeah.
Well, you have to get your residential kitchen certified as a commercial with an exemption if you were to do it as home-based in your normal residential kitchen. There would be nothing that would prevent you, perhaps, if you were to build a 1,500-square-foot facility. Now, some people are gonna cultivate in greenhouses. Some people are gonna build a building to cultivate in the building. And if you've got a 750-foot canopy, and you have another 750 feet in the facility, and you're a-
Manufacturing.
Craft cultivator, and you're manufacturing, you could theoretically build a small commercial kitchen that meets the standards to do your cultivating outside of your home in your business facility.
So that's a business operation in a residential area?
Bingo.
Home business operation.
Yeah.
I'm having a hard time with that.
Still commercial. Workshop.
Yeah.
Awesome.
I gotta go back and look at that.
There's no difference in fixing cars.
So this is not to back- So we have to do that at the end?
We're reading some exceptions here, that was the intent, I mean, there's not a whole lot here. We can run through-
I gotta, I gotta read more.
Okay, I mean, I've only got one report.
I think the sizes are low in our limitations. I don't think we should allow 1,500 feet, that's too big.
A little early.
The idea was that you could have a-
I think he enjoys our company.
The way I envision this is similar to my craft brewery in my basement. I occupy a couple hundred square feet to manufacture something that is a home-based, it's not a really a home-based business, but it's a, it's a home-based craft.
But you don't sell it.
Right, but I, but I could, if I wanted to, because I'm under a threshold of gallons per year. Right, and it, it falls under a home-based craft thing. And I do that, and that's what I'm thinking of in terms when I refer to it. 1,500 feet to me is huge. That's way bigger than what I'm thinking of for-
But if you figure 750 square feet of-
I think that's huge too.
Canopy is-
Yeah, I think that's pretty big. But growing something and manufacturing something takes very different sizes.
Correct.
I need a lot of acreage to grow all of the, the hops and grain that I would want to grow in order to brew a year's worth of beer.
And there's a significant amount of area required for drying. You don't-
Right.
Pull the plant down and just start processing it. There's a whole process for what you need to do with it, so therefore that was, I, I was trying to think in, if someone wanted to do this, what sort of space might they need? And 750 square feet of canopy, I mean, I don't know how many plants that is. I don't know what that produces, but if the lowest tier of cultivation is 5,000 square feet, I mean, this is less than 20% of that.
All right, we'll talk more Tuesday.
All right. Talk more Tuesday, that sounds like a, a good slogan. Are you going to talk more Tuesday? I'm going to talk more Tuesday.
All right, so minutes approval.
We're gonna have to eat more Wednesday.
Minutes 2:10:18. Everybody's gotten a chance to read through them?
Yep.
Were there any comments on the minutes of 2:10:18?
None. We accept the minutes.
One of these, I was, I was missing, but I didn't memorize them by date.
12:10:18. Sorry, I moved that we accept the minutes of 12.
Can I see the minutes? Do we have them handy? I did review them all electronically, and some of them I wasn't in attendance, so. I approve of all the ones I was in attendance, but I have to abstain from the ones I wasn't.
Ah.
And I have to abstain from the ones I wasn't either.
You were at 12:10.
So accept.
We, we all were?
Uh, yes, we were all, we were all at that one.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was moved in second, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the minutes of 12:10:18, the 151, 181, Lemonster Shirley Road.
Move that we approve the minutes.
I have to initially-
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
It was one abstention. Did you get that?
That's the executive session, we don't, we don't do those, right?
We do do those.
Oh.
I didn't see-
We don't send them out.
I didn't see them, can I see them?
Executive, oh, sorry.
That was this one. Aye for me, so.
I read those.
Did I read those in the office?
No.
I better read those.
It did.
There's two sets of them. I mean, there's two different executive sessions. 2:11:18. 1:03. Executive session. 1:08. Okay, it's, but it's on-
Yeah.
Okay.
Executive, there are two left.
No, no, we're waiting on 12:10. Executive session.
Yeah, so why don't you do 12:11 while they read that?
Oh, well, so they can participate. Or not, all right.
It's just the older one.
So the minute, the minutes from 12:11:18, anybody have any comments?
Do we have the minutes?
It was a general-
That was the joint, I don't think you were there for that, but the selectmen.
Got all abstaining on this one.
And move we accept the minutes?
Uh, second. Tanner was there.
It was Tanner, David, and Matthew.
Tanner, can you second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining.
Abstaining.
Uh, 1:03:19. 1, Matt, Dave, Ken, Tanner, no, it wasn't, this is general.
Oh, there was already-
Oh, that's the-
Everybody was there.
Yeah.
Move that we accept the minutes for 1:03:19?
Thank you, my brain. Second.
Excellent, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So now the executive session?
Can I see the 1:03:19 executive session minutes?
The first one.
Okay, so I move we accept the executive session minutes from December 10th, 2018?
Uh, second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
I need to see the 1:03:19 minutes. I need to see the executive session minutes from 1:03:19.
1:03:19.
Oh, my goodness. It's a long sucker.
When this stormwater decide to meet, Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday morning, 11:30.
This might be something we can ask counsel. I spoke with Marjorie earlier today. When I was on the Board of Selectmen, they did email executive session minutes, just mark them accordingly, so I'm not sure if that's something we wanna explore, whether or not they can be emailed, so that we don't run into this.
My concern with that would be, if they're emailed out, somebody can put that off, and they're out there, instead of having just the original in the office.
Well, that goes with any confidential legal document that the Board has access to. I mean, there has to be some level of trust in the individuals that are on the Board.
I move we accept the-
Second.
Minutes from executive session dated January 3rd, 2018. And you have a second.
Still a second, Ken?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that's the end, we don't have the 1:08:19. So committee reports, capital planning got pushed off till tomorrow. Stormwater task force, we met last Thursday. For less than an hour, we received an invoice or a proposal for continuing services, and the task force is gonna meet again on Wednesday morning with the town manager to discuss. discuss. I'm not going to be able to be there. That was pretty much it. And agricultural commissions meeting this Thursday in the Ritter at 7:30. So open space?
Hold on, Matt. Question on, on capital plan?
Yeah.
Does the, did the town manager make that presentation on the master plan yet? Or is tomorrow?
Yeah, we were scheduled for last Tuesday, but due to lack of posting on time, we're scheduled for tomorrow.
Okay, so that's on tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night.
Okay.
Tomorrow afternoon, actually, 5:00, 5:15.
Okay, thank you.
You're at the Ritter?
No. Ag comments is already, yes.
Yeah.
Open space?
Open space. Uh, we were all at the meeting, right? Well, you guys heard the meeting that we had with, with the BOS, and that was our last. I missed the meeting after that because I had to stay around for our meeting, so I don't have an update on what was said afterward. But my understanding is we may have to go back for final approval, that they had discussed some of the questions and comments that had come in, address some of those, and then we would have one more meeting. That's my understanding, but I haven't double-checked that with Brandon yet.
Okay. Montez, the Joint Transportation Commission?
Meeting is this coming Wednesday, and I will not be able to attend. Are you going to be able to attend?
Yes, it was last Wednesday.
I thought it was this coming Wednesday.
And I did attend.
It was last Wednesday.
You also thought you were in Spain earlier.
No, I did not.
I got an, well, I wasn't able to attend last Wednesday because I was traveling, but I thought there was, I thought they sent out a meeting invite for this coming Wednesday. Did I read it wrong?
Well, if it is this Wednesday, yes, I can attend. I'll have to look back at my emails.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the MPO that he sent out.
Yeah, it's the MPO that's meeting.
I read that wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
My bad. We both missed the meeting last Wednesday.
Okay. Montez, the Regional Planning Commission?
I was not able to attend. I was at a joint meeting with Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Charter review?
Uh, we met for our public hearing last Wednesday. One of the things that I wanted to bring up, and I don't know that if we need to put this on the agenda or not, but I figured I'd mention it, is we have 15 days to ratify the appointment of the land use director if that position becomes available and the town manager appoints someone new to that position. My only question along those lines is, is that enough time?
Given that sometimes we have three weeks?
Yeah, and, and so part of the charter changes are 15, we're converting everything to calendar days, so weekends count.
Yeah, that's not enough time.
And I don't know that that's enough time. So if we want to have a discussion about it or any other aspects in Section 310 of the charter regarding planning, I think we should probably...
Put that on the agenda. Yeah, put that on the agenda.
I have no objection to that. Can we put that on the agenda?
We should, yeah.
Good catch.
Did you get that, Adam?
Higher land use director.
In 15 days.
Ratified. Green Communities Task Force?
Uh, I haven't heard from them.
Probably, they haven't met.
I'm sorry?
They haven't met. Okay, directors' items?
Okay, for the sake of time, I think we'll buzz through some of these. Master plan, we're going to talk to capital planning tomorrow. $100,000, implement and update the 2002 master plan. My belief is that the less specificity, the better, because it gives the planning board the ability to be nimble as they move through the process and not be tied to, we're going to do task A, B, C, D, E. And in sort of following through with that, we've received a request for services from Montez City Regional Planning Commission for district local technical assistance. So I'm going to put together a, an application for a master plan chapter, just to sort of kick it off and get stuff started now. My thought was we would start with economic development, because that's the one that's most recent, probably have the lowest cost, the most likelihood of success, and we could just sort of pick that up and start with it, since that's what's on everybody's tongue recently.
Well, I guess I have a concern about that, because we never read the draft that they did.
Correct.
So I don't know.
Well, some of the things in there have been done, so you'd prefer to start with a different chapter?
Well, I'd at least like us to look at it. I mean, one of my concerns is the whole population projection, I think, is really concerning. So I'd really like somebody to look at that, because that's a big component of the master plan. When you're planning a vision for X amount versus double that, it changes things drastically.
So would you like to try and get them to do the vision section under the DLTA?
Um, no, I think the vision is us personally. But I think that, I think that, you know, a big part of that is the population. So maybe they do a population study, or maybe they do a, you know, I don't know.
There is a population study that goes into it. So do we have access to an alternate population study?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, the pop, I don't know if you've seen it, but the population studies that they have coming out of...
Transportation modeling studies, yeah.
Is way low.
It seemed, their predictions all indicate that we're going to start decreasing in, in population as opposed to increasing over time. And their longer-term projections have us getting significantly smaller from a population perspective, which just doesn't seem to blend with...
What's happening?
Before we spend any money on that, can we just have that conversation with MRPC? Can we have, can we have the town clerk, uh, town clerk? Town manager talk to them and say, hey, these are our concerns, these numbers, these projections look off?
Yeah, the last number I saw on our MAX buildup was 22,000 or something.
Yeah.
22, which is twice what we...
So if we could get a confidence, you know, some kind of a confidence projection on their projections, that might help before, then we can...
I know the town manager has the same concerns when she looked at the population.
Then we can look at other options if, if we disagree with them.
Um, when does the, when do you have to tell them what the DLTA, when is the deadline?
I have to look back. I think it's mid-February or early February. It's a pretty quick turnaround.
Now, this is for our included services or additional services?
No, it's a grant, basically.
DLTA is a grant that they receive. They get a pot of money from the state to do specific things.
Right, but we get like eight hours a year.
Right.
No, that's a different thing. The DLT, that's different.
DLTA is outside of that.
Okay.
This is project-specific. This is what they did the permanent guidebook under.
Right. So it's a service, they, it's a...
It's a competitive...
It's a competitive process.
Quote-unquote, service.
Provided only by them.
No, it's competitive between all the member committees, all member communities.
But they're often begging for projects to round out those, those dollars.
I see.
Which is why I say quote-unquote, because some years it's, boom, the money's gone, and other years they're like, please, somebody call us and help us spend this money.
Yeah.
Uh, so it really depends year to year. Well, I'll, I'll check with them on the projections and we can, I'll slip it in at the end of the agenda on Tuesday, and we can formalize then if there's a chapter you want to use.
That would be great.
So that's a good segue into land use guidebook. You all were going to look at the revised draft, which was sent out to you for approval this evening. I think the only thing Marjorie noticed in reviewing it was that the retail commercial district is still in there, which is a district that no longer exists.
Hmm.
This is something we should push off for two weeks?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Cluster development. We've talked about the impacts of the wording of our cluster development bylaw. Is this something that you want to try and put on town meeting in May?
Yes, in my opinion.
Well, I hear yes, and I can give you a draft. I'm going to put the caution out there that we don't seem to move through draft bylaws quickly, and if we're trying to do the bylaw that we are...
I think we have some specific ideas of what we want to fix in the cluster development bylaw.
The whole different...
Whole different ballgame. This is, this is new.
We want to close loopholes, and I think we're all, all probably mostly in agreement with how we want to tighten it up.
Then if you will each send me specific comments about what you want to tighten up, I will put a placeholder on the warrant, and I will have a draft to you within a reasonable timeframe to hold a public hearing.
Well, if I may, in discussions with council, this issue has kind of come up, and they have clauses to help mitigate this situation. So instead of us drafting something and then reviewing it and saying, well, this is what you should have written, why don't we just have them?
They know the issue.
Woohoo!
So they ask council to correct that issue.
Now, wait a minute.
I, I will work with council to, to move that forward.
Good.
Uh, and I think solar energy is a much larger conversation.
I don't know if it is that, that big a conversation, but we've, clearly, we have to get to it, because...
I agree. Um, and earth removal, we can talk about it another time, because we've got other, other fish to fry.
All right. I think it's a big conversation. All board meetings are held at town hall, 6:30 unless otherwise indicated, January 28th. We have an open schedule?
I currently am scheduled to not be at that meeting, because that's what my travel from this week got postponed to.
Please let us know if you're going to come, so we'll...
Yeah, I, I know now that if my travel gets canceled, I have to notify my children and Marjorie.
Is that true? We have an open schedule?
As far as I'm aware. That'll give you more time to talk pot.
Yeah, I was just going to say, good.
Yes.
Over for my workshop.
So hopefully after our workshop, we'll have it all hashed up.
I'm wearing my yabba dabba doobie shirt.
So Feb. 11, we've got 1:51, 1:81, Lemmonsterr Shirley Road update, and we also have the continuation of our public hearing from tonight.
And I expect we may have two more public hearings.
Awesome.
We don't want to have too many public hearings in one night.
Yeah, that's a lot of public hearings, three public hearings.
Unless they're, unless they're non-controversial public hearings.
But Lemmonsterr Shirley should be a fairly low-key...
Yeah, no, I'm...
Oh, yeah.
The continuation from tonight, meh. The other two are, it'll be opening of public hearings, so I don't think you'll act on anything, but I don't think either of them are overly controversial.
It would be the electric AV projects down at the 400 block.
So it's something that's been through the zoning board process and, and did so fairly non-controversially.
Okay.
Talking about the convenience and gas station, all that stuff?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so then there's Feb. 25, looks open?
For now.
Uh, for holdover. Ongoing items, earth removal.
We'll talk about that later.
Village Flat Hill.
I think we're done with that.
Economic development.
We're working on it.
Public comment? Any public comment?
Okay, Katie Adams Williams Drive, and commenting as a citizen, just back to marijuana. When it comes to residential zoning, I don't understand home business zoning enough to really articulate my concern, but my one thing would be that marijuana isn't given any opportunity that any other person may want to have on their residential property, whether it's the size of the greenhouse being some other structure, or whether it's just some other operation that is very, very similar. That's, I mean, I, I know, people know how I feel, but also I just, I like consistency in any process in government. And if we're opening up opportunity for this business because people want to do it in their home, there might be things I want to do in my home, and I can't.
Yeah.
And so I just think that's going to be the litmus test at the end of it. If you have this size structure and this size parcel, and then you want to, you know, I said ornament factory one night, but I want to, you know, open up something else, can I? And if the answer is no, and it's a non-controversial business, then the idea that we'd open up a pathway for a controversial business, it just, it's mind-boggling to me, just in terms of the role of protecting people's opportunity to live here in, in peace. And if they don't have an opportunity to have a non-controversial business of the same size, then allowing a drug business, it just, it's not the type of town I want to live in. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? Seeing none. Board comments, concerns? Seeing none. I would accept a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to regular session.
So moved.
So moved.
I think you have to read the whole thing.
I believe, sir.